Commissioner Hirschfahl?
Present.
Commissioner Maruzi?
Here.
Commissioner Song?
Present.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Present.
Chairwoman.
Present. Can I get a report on the posting of the agenda?
Madam Chair, in planning commissioners, our agenda was published on Wednesday, November 10th, and so our meeting has been published in accordance with state law.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda? Commissioner Hirschfahl, you had...
Oh, yeah, that's me. Okay. Yeah, I had a comment on the September 22nd draft minutes that I want to correct it.
Okay, we will take that up at that point in time. Commissioner Maruzi?
I have to abstain on the minutes of October 27th because I was not there.
Okay.
I will move acceptance of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 At this point, we have time for public comments. This time's been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar Agenda items and other items in the general subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission cannot take action on items that have not been listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. Testimony for public hearings may be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing. Members of the public who wish to comment on 1A and 5A are directed to comment under this section of the agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Newell, am I to assume there are no members of the public?
No one has unmuted themselves, so I don't believe we have anyone requesting to speak at this time. We do have one person who has requested to speak via phone, which we will give the call for when that item is heard, that would be item 2E.
Thank you.
No.
Then I'm moving on to the consent calendar. Before we... I ask for a motion. Commissioner Hirschfahl, you had comments on the September 22nd, 2021 minutes.
That's correct. Under New Business 4A, my comment at the bottom of the page is written as incorrect. It says Commissioner Hirschfahl suggested placing a barricade in the street median. Well, that's what I was opposed to, and that's what I wanted to prohibit in a... As part of a motion to approve, but it didn't get incorporated. But I certainly didn't suggest placing it there.
How would you like that to read?
You could... Commissioner Hirschfahl opposes placing a barricade in the street median.
Thank you. With that comment, are there any comments on this item? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve 1A with the change that Commissioner Hirschfahl suggested. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hirschfahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Lian?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
And Chairwoman?
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
We're moving on to public hearings. The next item is 2A, Sandborne Architecture, on behalf of Allure Palm Springs LLC, for an amendment to a final development plans for a planned development district 309 and major architectural approval for the construction of 26 single-family residences on a 4.1 acre parcel located at the southwest corner of Rosewood Road and El Dorado Boulevard. The staff recommendation on this is to continue it until a date certain of December 8th, 2021. Can I take a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Our next item is Green Rock Investments LLC, doing business as Desert Flowers. Love that name. Seeking a conditional use permit for a cannabis cultivation operation within existing building to include a type 6 manufacturing facility occupying 369 square feet, a distribution center... Distribution activities of 323 square feet, a cannabis cultivation grow of 11,333 square feet within an existing building at 19160 McLean Street, Zone M2. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you able to see the screen, the slides?
Yes.
We're going to switch screens. Glenn, can you switch the screens?
Second.
You've got two screens showing, so one is very tiny, Glenn.
Can you see it now?
Perfect.
Right, okay. Sorry about that. So this is a cannabis cultivation project. I gotta get it to move. There we go. So the application request is a conditional use permit for cultivation, which is proposed at 11,333 square feet, a type 6 manufacturing facility, which is 369 square feet, and type 6 non-volatile, meaning that they won't use chemicals or solvents, and then a 323 distribution and transportation portion of the building for a total of 12,000 square feet. So the site is... was previously approved by the Planning Commission in 2014 as a rock climbing gym. It was built and occupied for several years, but became vacant, and the applicant purchased the land, the property, the parcel, and is seeking the conditional use permit. They received the city permit back in March of this year and went through all the proper channels to get the administrative permit. And looking at an area of the site, you'll notice that it is in the middle of the McLean tract with other industrial sites around it. It is zoned in our cannabis zone, which is an area that is stipulated for grow types of facilities. You'll notice that there's a parking lot behind it and then vacant lots on both sides. There are no restricted uses within 600 feet of the site, meaning there's no playgrounds or any kind of childcare facilities in this area. And looking at the site plan, as I mentioned, the building is existing, so all the parking is there, the trees, the medians for the trees, and then all the landscaping is currently in. In recapping parking, they are required to have 16 total spaces, and there exist 22, so they meet our parking requirements. When the project went through the administrative review process for the city permit, they had an odor control plan that was reviewed by the city consultant and was approved. And they are proposing to use carbon filters, a box within a box designed for the grow areas, a closed-loop HVAC system, administrative controls, and staff training. Our odor consultant is available and is on the call, and if you have questions, he'll be able to answer those for you. We conducted an environmental review. The Alton Group prepared an initial study, and it was determined that a negative declaration can be adopted. They are... They looked at energy use during the operation. They looked at providing power from our desert community facility for carbon-free power. They'll be using light fixtures to be energy efficient, and they'll meet Title 24 energy codes. And our consultant, Thomas Strand, is available on the call should the Planning Commission have questions on the initial study. And that initial study was included in your packets for review. In the environmental review, they also looked at wastewater and water quality. The wastewater that is associated with the cultivation facilities will be hauled off-site. There currently is a septic system that will be able to contain all the water that is not related to the cultivation there on-site. They are reducing the number of plumbing fixtures because of the type of use. You know, it was a rock climbing gym, and now it's... There's just one bathroom facility in the site. Water quality, their report cited that there will be limited water demand. There's a closed water system that the applicant can describe better for the cultivation. And then the Mission Springs Water District provided conditions which are in your conditions of approval, so they have reviewed the project and provided a series of conditions that you will approve should you do this evening. Then going through a couple of the slides, this is a site plan showing, once again, the site is fully developed. There'd be no grading. There'll be no changes to the exterior of the building other than a mechanical screen, which we'll go over shortly. In the packet, there are floor plans, and if I could zoom in real quick and show you the flowering rooms, which are on the first floor, and I need to say that they are... Because of the height of the building, they're adding a mezzanine level, which allows it to double the square footage, so there'll be a first floor and a second floor. On the first floor, you'll see that there's areas for distribution and then the extraction for the type 6 manufacturing. The next page is the second floor, and this is very similar to the first. The flowering rooms, there'll be seven of them, where they'll do the growing. And then this is a cross-section of the building itself, and you'll see that these are the racks where the plants will grow, and then the mezzanine floor, which is between the first and second levels. And looking at the roof, there's proposed equipment on the roof. The equipment is tall. It's at least six feet tall, and the parapet that is around the building will not screen. So what they're proposing is a corrugated metal screen that is six feet tall that will be affixed to the edge of the building and will fully screen the equipment on the roof. In your packet, there's also mechanical systems that shows the air ventilation, the carbon scrubbers that will filter the air and keep odors from emitting from the building. So you have a first floor and a second floor. Once again, in the environmental review, we looked at wastewater, water quality. And to conclude, Chair, the staff finds that the project can be approved based upon meeting all the findings for a conditional use permit. We recommend that you adopt the negative declaration and that you approve the conditional use permit based upon the conditions that are in your packet. So once again, Madam Chair, our odor consultant and our CQ consultant is available for any questions, and also the applicant is here.
Before we have questions of staff, does anybody want to hear from our odor consultant or our CQ consultant? I have one question of the odor consultant.
Hello?
Hi there. If you can just say your name, Jay?
Yeah, Jay Takkus with 15,000.
Am I correct in assuming that the odor control plan is to current standards?
Yes, it was reviewed to the current modified standards that all plants are now being reviewed to.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Jay? Seeing none, and are there any questions of our CQ consultant? Seeing none? We've had a staff report. Are there any questions of staff?
I have a question of staff.
Commissioner Hirschfahl?
Glenn, you mentioned a mezzanine. I mean, to me, it's really a second floor. Is that not correct?
You could call it a second floor. For building purposes, they are calling it a mezzanine. So it's basically a steel structure placed within the four walls of the concrete up tilt building.
Unless they changed the building code, in my day, it was... Mezzanine could only be a certain percentage of the floor below.
No, this will take the whole floor, so...
No, I understand that, and that's why... Anyway, that's kind of a technicality. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about... You mentioned box and box, and although this is in the right neighborhood for this use, I'm convinced. When you say box and box, we've had this discussion a lot, where we would require a new wall be built inboard, furred out from the existing wall, to qualify for that term. I know it's not a technical term, but we've used it enough that it means something to us. And was that discussed with the applicant?
Yes, it was, and they are... They will describe that to you better than I would. But my understanding is that it's panels that go inside the building that provide an airtight and washable surface that odors won't escape. And I know we have a long history of these types of uses going into existing buildings and using a box-in-a-box description, and trying to describe it to the applicant, they feel that they can meet that requirement, so they can describe it for you in greater detail than I can.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Commissioner Song?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The planning condition 5 about renewable energy, where it says that the applicant should use 100% free power via desert community energy. What is the process in which they show proof of that? Is that invoice bills, or is that a contract with the utility provider? That's one question. Second question is, has there been a distance recorded to Motel 6, and is Motel 6 falling under sort of residential zone or not? And then the last question is, when it comes to the 25% less plumbing fixtures, was that determined from what could be allowed from the plumbing building code? And therefore, how has that been reduced to 25%? Those are the three questions I have.
Right, okay. I'm writing these down, so don't forget them. So, sorry, the first one was, again, the...
First one was about the renewable energy.
Right, right.
I think this is the first project that we're entering into the agreement.
Right, so when the applicant first came in, staff was describing to them how they could get to a place of renewable energy, whether it was solar panels on the roof or panels somewhere else nearby, and, you know, they're contemplating that. But in the meantime, they offered that they would be renewable, use renewable sources. So they can use the desert community energy, or SCE has a renewable energy program. How we would police that, that would be between them and, you know, you'd have to figure that out, how that would... How we would follow up to make sure that that is the case. And in terms of residential within the area, Motel 6 is 1,200 feet away. I've measured it on our GIS, so it's not close. And then the... There are some mobile homes that are north in Desert Hot Springs, and those are almost 4,000 feet away. And then the plumbing, that was... The plumbing fixtures, 25% reduction, that was offered by the applicant as a way to reduce water usage and other waste. So it wasn't a city requirement that they reduce it by 25%. They are offering that sort of description of the project.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of staff? Commissioner Urban?
Yeah, Glenn, I heard you say that there was a six-foot-high gate that's going to be on the top of the building?
Right, a mechanical screening.
Okay, and so with that height, what would be that total height with that six foot?
So the building, you mean, with the height, the screen on top? That's a good question. I have to look that up. One second. The building height is at least 24 feet, so add another six on top of that. Granted that the zoning code allows mechanical equipment to be screened at a greater height, so it would not be taller than, I would say, nearby properties. There are tall warehouse buildings within that area, so it would be consistent with what other buildings I have for mechanical screening.
Okay, so that was going to be the next question. If there were any other buildings around the area that had that height, or was it an exception to that height?
This warehouse district area, there are tall buildings that are up to 30 or more feet tall.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Lian?
How long has the building been vacant?
That is a question of the applicant. I know the rock climbing gym opened soon after it was finished and operated for a couple of years.
Okay, but it's been vacant for a while. So at this point, it's fair to say that the building is not being used productively? It's not generating any tax other than property tax, and it doesn't have any jobs? There's no employment associated with it?
At this time, there's no employment associated with it, no.
Okay, so if we're asked to find that the use is either necessary or beneficial to the community, it's fair to say that it is not currently producing revenue? It will be producing revenue. It will be providing eight to 12 jobs, and it will be using a currently unused asset in the community?
Correct. Other than property taxes, that's correct.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One is the lease. There's a ten-year lease on the building. It looks like it's between the parties, but it does expire, so what happens to the CUP if the lease expires? Does that go with it?
Right, so the property runs with the land. So the property owner, Green Rock Investors, instead of Investments... They corrected me on that. So it's Green Rock Investors LLC owns the property, and they would have the lease with Desert Flowers, and they will be able to describe the ownership when they come on.
That isn't my question. My question is, what happens to the CUP if the lease ends?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and respond to that question. As Mr. Malacca has indicated, the conditional use permit runs with the land. However, with a cannabis use, the permit runs with the applicant. And so if they were to sell the business, if you will, to a new individual, that individual would have to go through the city's process of obtaining a new cannabis permit. And potentially, we would need to amend the conditional use permit if there's any changes to the operation. And so that's the process that we would follow if there was a change in ownership of the business.
Thank you. My second question goes to the water and the separate tank and it having to be hauled off-site. Is that water contaminated? Why is it being hauled off-site? And where does it go?
So that... Thomas, do you know what I respond to that? It's used for... It's waste from the cultivation activity, so there may be some particulates or other water runoff that would not be appropriate to go into the septic tanks.
Can someone... Can our environmental consultant answer that?
Yeah, and that's generally correct, and it's actually required as part of the permit.
Introduce yourself.
Thomas Strand, environmental planner with the Alton Group. And yeah, what... Just to support what Glenn said, that is actually a requirement as part of the permit, too. And so there are... There are byproducts from the process of the cultivation that is stored on-site and hauled off to a permitted hazardous waste site.
And just in terms of the particulates, are they using... They're not using anything like glycosate to round up on these plants?
No.
So we're not looking at that kind of particulate? Okay. And then one will be a question, but I think we'll get to that in the conditions. I think in the last time we had a cannabis project, the Bud's project, our attorney said that we could reference the... In the conditions, we can reference the... That there would be an administrative citation and that kind of language, so that we could reference the code that the permit is operating under.
Right, that's correct. I pulled the conditions from the Planning Commission approval on October 27th of American Bud's, and you added planning condition number 22 about compliance with the municipal code, Chapter 5.5, and I can read that if you... And I can read that if you like, but I can use that in this, these conditions if you'd like.
Possible, I think I would like to see those in that in these conditions, but I don't think you need to read it till we get to motions. If there are no more questions, the, this is a public hearing, the public hearing is open.
I have, I have one more question. This water disposal thing kind of piqued my interest. Have, have we, has that been done before with grow facilities in Palm Springs? Have we required that the water be trucked off the site?
Thomas, is that a common?
Yes, it is. And I'm not, I can't speak specifically to Palm Springs, but as part of the overarching permitting process, yes, it is. It's a, it's a requirement of the permitting, the cannabis manufacturing process. Sorry, the cultivation process.
When you say it's a requirement, who's, who's requiring it? Does Palm Springs require it or some other agency?
No, see, it's a state agency that, that monitors the cultivation of marijuana.
So the state agency requires the trucking of the water off the site?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I guess just only one other question. Can we require in conditions that the shower, and I'm delighted to see they have one, is kept operational? So it just doesn't go in in the beginning, but they continue to keep it as an amenity for staff?
Well, you have in the conditions, follow up with inspections, we could
Add it to that.
To that.
Okay, thank you. Public, there being no more questions, the public hearing is open if the applicant is present?
Yes, we are present. I was trying to start the video, but it says the host has disabled it. There we go. All right, everybody. I just wanted to start off by thanking the, the planning commission and the city staff. We really appreciate all the hard work. I know there's a lot behind the scenes that goes on to get us to this point. It's, it's been a long process for us. I know it's a long process for your team respectively. So we appreciate that as a, as a group. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to, to share my screen and just go over a few key points and kind of introduce our business and our team. Is that all right?
Please, yes.
Okay. Okay, so we are operating as Desert Flower Farms. We are a State of California LLC. I know there was a few questions regarding ownership. Green Rock Investors is a mutual entity of ours. The ownership is the same, and it will continue to be the same. We strive to produce high-quality cannabis. We want to build a recognizable brand throughout the region. We plan to be fully compliant with the State of California and the City of Palm Springs. And the two most important aspects of our business are our mission and our core values. And our mission is to grow people, grow relationships, grow quality product, and to build a profitable company that other companies want to work with. When we constantly say eternally, we want to be the gold standard. Our core values are integrity, growth-oriented, results, and dedication. We own our success, and we're all, we're all agile, so we stay with agility. A couple of points that are important to our operation here is energy conservation, water conservation through reclamation, intelligent design, high-quality consultant contractor selection. We maintain a very stringent due diligence process with all the contractors and consultants that we work with, commitment to our local community. We want to be good stewards of our neighborhood, and we're planning on creating, creating eight to 10, possibly up to 12, new high-quality jobs. Our, our core focus is on corporate responsibility, and again, being the gold standard. I'm going to hop in, if it's okay, I'm going to hop right into our closed loop VRF system and our odor control process. I know it seems like it's been a pretty important aspect of all the different companies that have come before the planning commission. We are an envelope within an envelope, we're a box within a box. We have gone through quite a bit of work to, to make sure that our building is, is truly odor-free from the outside. We've set up a two-by-two furring wall between our, our row rooms and the exterior walls of our building. I think they call it a half-track fur. It's non-permeable to air or water. All of our walls have an FRP coating on them. We use 5/8 sheet rock and two-by-four and two-by-six steel stud walls. Our facility was built in 2014. It's in excellent condition. As previously mentioned, it was a rock climbing gym that, that we're converting into a, more or less a two-story building. No exterior changes beyond the roof. This building is special because it was actually built with a special type of block. It's called jumbo light, and it's actually a concrete and styrofoam mix. Provides a tremendous R factor. So insulation is great. You can walk into the building when it's 105 outside, and it's nice and pleasant with no air conditioning running. Our initial canopy area is going to be roughly 7,700 square feet. We are located in the cannabis screen zone. We have no penetrations of exterior walls due to the construction type. We're low or no odor emission due to the construction type again. We do not have any air handling units outside of the building, aside from condensers. So all of our interior HVAC controls are VRF-type and cassette-type. So we don't have to worry about leaking drafty air or odorous compounds out into the outside. The building is attractive, modern, well-kept. There is mature landscaping on site. We were going through a 1,200 amp power upgrade. We actually just finished last week with Edison. And our average estimated use is about 560 kilowatts a month. Those are kind of some of the highlights. I'll bring this one slide back up because I know you guys are going to have questions on the odor control. But I, I think that's, that's pretty much all we have, and I appreciate your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Are there other members as a public who wish to testify? Can you, do you have any, seeing none? I'm assuming you do not have a rebuttal, but would you please stay with us for questions from the commission? If there are any questions from the commission? And please speak up, because I can't see all of your faces or your hands.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Jeff, can you once unshare the screen?
Commissioner Song here.
Yes, I have two questions, one, I'm sorry, three questions. One is the California saving by design with Southern California Edison. What, it's the electricity or energy offset that, that with that program is allowing you with the, with the proposed building improvement? And then question number two is, knowing that it's a septic system tank, can you speak a little bit more about what are the check and balances that you will have on understanding how the water is going to be driven? Is, is there some sort of control system that alerts that it's time for the water systems to be shifted off the site? Can you speak about that? And then the last was, how were you able to determine that there was 25% reduction on plumbing demand?
Sure, I'll start with the last question because it's, it's probably the quickest. We, we determined with our engineers and architects that the, the previous occupancy requirement was much higher. So we've reduced that down to two restrooms, and we added a shower. We, we, I noticed in one of the previous applicant meetings that a shower was a requirement. And I've watched some previous where, where there wasn't a shower. And we think it's a good addition, not only for our employees, but as you mentioned previously, contaminants, you know, people might ride their bike, although it's, it's a kind of a hike out to North Palm Springs on a bike, depending on the time of year. But with those reduction of facilities, that's how we achieved that 25%. Moving on to the, to the plumbing and into the water reclamation, is the existing septic system that's on site will only be used for the, for the restroom facilities. So washing hands, taking a shower, using the restroom, those are the only items that will be going into the septic. The rest of our facility, we actually were awarded a, a, I guess it was, what was it?
Sustainability.
Sustainability award from the City of Palm Springs to purchase some environmentally friendly pumps that we'll be using to pump our wash-down water. And I know there was some questions previously about, you know, how, how does that work? So in each one of our flower rooms, there'll be a sump pump in the floor. And when we do a cleanup at the end of a, of a grow, that water will be pumped to a holding tank and then hauled off site by a licensed contractor.
We measure.
And, and we also measure what goes in the wash downs. You know, it's, it's, it's very strict. We're not, no glyphosate, no non-organic compounds, no volatile chemicals. It's, it's all essentially washed down green, safe, safe contaminants. I do believe we have our safety, safety data sets available as well for review. The other water reclamation processes that we have is condensate water from our HVAC system and our dehumidifiers. On the floor plan that, that Glenn showed earlier, you might have seen some water tanks on the south end of the building. Two of those are dedicated to reclamation. So we're going to pull as much water back out of, out of the process as we can. And then to answer your, I'm sorry, what was your first question?
The California saving by design.
Yeah, yes, we partnered up with Edison, and they, they led us through this, this process, savings, savings by design. You know, there, there's a lot of information out there about lights, what's efficient, what's not efficient. We worked with a great team that drove us in the right direction. So, so we ended up selecting LEDs, and they also helped us out with our HVAC design. I think the, the annual savings was 980,000 kilowatt hours back off the grid, so nearly a megawatt. By, by choosing these, you know, and not going with a high-pressure sodium or other kind of legacy light or forced air or anything like that. So that's why we, that's why we went with that program.
Other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Chair. So Mr. Tidwell, I was impressed by your 25% reduction in plumbing well in your fixtures. I'm referring to page eight of our staff report under the environmental analysis. What did you eliminate?
I believe we had, so I've got, Legacy was five toilets. Our new toilets are two. We had four sinks, we've reduced that to two. One year and all, which we've kept the same. We had zero showers before, we've added one shower. And then the water fountains, we've, we've kept the same at two water fountains. So it was 12 fixtures, we've reduced it to eight. It's a net of negative four.
So, that's interesting to me. So how does that necessarily translate in less use of water? In other words, the staff within that facility is still going to be using the existing plumbing fixtures? So I don't, I see that as a, I see that as a reduction in fixtures, but not necessarily a reduction in water?
Sure, I think it might come into occupancy. There was a far greater number of people at the rock climbing gym that were using those facilities.
Oh, you're saying from the last use is that reduction?
Correct, from the last.
Not from your impending use?
Correct.
From the prior use, okay. So it's really just a reduction in use of water?
Yes.
Which is not as reliant on less fixtures, okay. I was looking for new exciting standards to add here, but obviously I was looking in the wrong place. That concludes my questions, thank you.
Thank you. And the, at this point, the public hearing is closed. I'm just going to take the floor for a moment. This is a very good project. I think it hits almost everything that we want. I noticed some items that people asked for. And if I can tie them in under PLN four, I think it's four, just when they do the checks, hold on, oh, sorry. PLN five, which is the renewable energy. I'd like to add language that the applicant will report annually to the Department of Special Programs or other, other entity specified by staff. Is that acceptable, Flynn?
Yes, that would be acceptable.
Chair, can I recommend that we go to PLN 14 under inspections? And whoever the inspector is, is chosen by the city, inspect also the electrical bills and then report back to the city that certifies that that particular condition is being complied with?
Do you, Flynn, which do you think is better? I would assume that special programs would look at the bills.
Yes, we would have special programs monitor compliance with that condition of approval. It, it could be added to either condition. It might be more appropriate in PLN 14, as Mr. Hirschbain is suggesting.
You'll add it to whichever you think is appropriate?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Then, in terms of the showers, I just think the inspectors would check while they're there that the showers are still, the shower is still operational for staff. We would add the language in, let's see. Grounds for revocation, we would add language referencing section 5.5 as a code in some form that's acceptable to staff and our attorney. And I don't think there were any other changes. One, one question is, is everybody comfortable with the, the way they're doing the box within a box? I am, but I didn't know if there were any other, there were comments on that. I think that's the only thing that generated comments. Commissioner Hirschbain?
Yeah, that was my comment. I, and I, I do want to move to approve this with conditions. So as, as it pertains to that, I would just like our staff to review the architectural details when they come in pertaining specifically to that issue and not certify, but just make sure that this furred-out wall system and, and the sheet rock perpendicular to it create a bond and it's indicated in the drawing. So there's something that we can point to and say, yes, that, that's right. Because right now it's a little, pretty vague. I understand they're preliminary drawings, but, and I don't want to CM again. I just want staff to, to verify when it comes through for Building Department approval, and they have to sign off on it.
Flynn, is there a way that we can, you can handle that or mention that in the conditions?
Yeah, we will go ahead and include that in the conditions of approval. The applicant has described on the record the system that they'll be using, so we'll incorporate that language into a condition of approval.
And then I think as we made And then I think as we made findings, I think Commissioner Ollanian wanted to be specific in the second finding. Do you want to give your language?
Yes, I do. And then I also have on the fourth one as well, the last paragraph of finding number two, there are no sensitive or protected uses near the site. And I would add the words, the use, the comma, the use will occupy a vacant building, providing for tax revenue and jobs, and therefore the proposed facility is desirable.
And did you have any changes to four as well?
Yes. Number four, we weren't directly responsive to the finding that we're supposed to be making about the traffic, although that information is all available in the environmental document. But I would suggest that the last sentence or second sentence be revised to say that the existing street network surrounding the location adequately supported a previous use, which generated a greater number of trips and higher vehicle miles traveled. So it will adequately carry and then continue, it will adequately carry the traffic for the proposed project.
So Commissioner Hirschbein is the maker of the motion. Are those two changes acceptable to you in the findings?
Yeah, I didn't know I made it, but that's.
I thought you said you were going to. And Commissioner Ollanian, do you want to be the second?
I would second that.
Oh, you know, I just wanted to mention one other thing architecturally, and I don't know if Commissioner approves, agrees with me on this, but I think putting a six-foot-high corrugated fence around the parapet is kind of gilding the lily. I'd be okay with them having exposed units up there. I mean, it's an industrial area. There's lots of exposed equipment in that area. I'm just fine with them not doing that.
I'd like to let them decide that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So we're basically saying we're not requiring it, but that won't be part of our motion. So how do we handle that, Flynn?
Sorry, what we will do is because there is a requirement in the code for screening of mechanical equipment, we will work with the applicant to come up with the best possible solution.
That sounds fine. Okay, can we call the roll unless there is any discussion? Hopefully none.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Ollanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Your woman.
Yes. And congratulations, it's a very nice project. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving right along to C, a project that we have seen many times and are delighted to see again. And Commissioner Song, you're recusing yourself, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The Desert AIDS Project for a Development Agreement to Vest Certain Development Rights for a Term of Ten Years and Timeline for Action Associated with the Approval of Case 3.1047 MAJ for the Addition of a New 18,000-Square-Foot Medical Office Pavilion Located at 1695 North Sunrise Way, PD #281. Staff report, please. Are you back again, Glenn?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. There we go. So you can see this slides, right? The full screen?
Yes.
Okay. So as you mentioned, the DAP has received a general plan amendment to modify land use. You also had an amendment that the Planning Commission approved to expand the PD boundary, establish development standards. One more second, there we go. I'm making sure this is the, this is not the right. Bear with me, Chair. I have too many DAP.
I think we recognize that one.
Sorry, Chair, I'm trying to find it. As you mentioned, too many DAP projects.
Actually, not enough.
Not enough, right. Yes, here we go. All right, could you see it now?
Not yet.
Now can you see it?
You have two items on the screen, so you might want to narrow it down to one.
Okay, sorry for the delay. So as you mentioned, the project history, so the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing back on November of 2020, and you approved all the entitlements for the project. And then again, in 2020, you approved the mitigative negative declaration. The City Council did that in December. The City Council also approved the development agreement with the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition for Sunrise, Vista Sunrise Two. And then the Planning Commission approved the final development plan for the housing on September of this year. So just to give you a brief history, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, the Planning Commission has reviewed this project quite a bit. Just to briefly look at the site plan, once again, I'm pointing at Vista Sunrise Two, which the Planning Commission approved, the City Council approved the development agreement. But we are talking about today, a development agreement for the pavilion, which is the 18,500-square-foot new addition that will join the DAP annex and the DAP main building. So the development agreement is seeking entitlements for 10 years and also to include the Sunrise Way street improvements at the time of the expansion project. And you are also making a recommendation of the draft development agreement to the City Council. So in your packet, you have a draft ordinance that the city attorney has reviewed, the applicant's attorneys have reviewed, and is here for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation. In the development agreement, there is a timeline for development. This is an exhibit that you'll see in the staff report and also in the development agreement itself. And I will have, I'm sure the applicant will go over this timeline with you, but it is meant to start in 2024, which is at the ending of the Vista Sunrise Two construction. So they sort of go hand in hand. One will be built before the other, but they are separate, but linked in the street improvements to Sunrise Way. So once again, this is the DAP pavilion that is part of this development agreement. And that also includes facade changes to the front of the DAP along Sunrise Way. So in the development agreement findings, the Planning Commission can find that the project is consistent with the general plan, it's compatible with surrounding uses, it will protect the general welfare and its good land use practice, it will not be detrimental to health, safety, and general welfare, and will not adversely, not affect property values or the orderly development in the area. So the planning, the plan, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the project, the development agreement, and recommend the City Council the first reading of the ordinance, which, as I mentioned, is in your packet. So that concludes my report, Madam Chair, and the applicant is available to discuss it.
Would the commission like to take, make questions of both the applicant and staff after the applicant talks? Do you go forward that way, or do you have questions specifically of staff? Seeing none of staff, the public hearing is open, and you have five minutes.
Hi, Commissioner Wermick. My name is Carl Baker. I'm Director of Legal and Legislative Affairs at Desert Age Project, doing business as DAP Health. I'd like to thank you and our commissioners for helping us move this project along, and also to all the city staff, especially Glenn, for all their assistance in this project. The commission, we've been working towards breaking ground and is in the process of getting Vista Sunrise Two apartments and creating a healthcare system. So the entire campus project will have housing, medical, dental, behavioral health, food pantry, social services for those of our community who are most in need. The idea of the pavilion is to expand our capacity to work inside of our own footprint. So also, we're combining the buildings for our patients, so they don't have to go outside during the extreme summer months to go from one building to the other. It's really a single shop for all their medical needs, from pharmacy to lab to medical services. So that whole project is pulling together to work as our desire to create a healthy community. Please note that the DA serves proposals as the private funds we're going to raise for the community. At the end of the day, we helped to plan to expand our touching from 10,000 members to 25,000 members of our community. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there questions? Do I see, oh, Commissioner Ollanian?
I have questions in, actually, Chair, I'd like that you open it up for questions for staff and applicant at the same time, because I'm not sure how to direct this necessarily. As I read the agreement, the obligations of the applicant are considered satisfied as soon as they pull the building permits. Is that correct?
Is that a question directed towards whom?
That's a question, I believe, from what I read, and I'm not finding it exactly right now, but.
Why don't we send that question to the city attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking it up right now to find that. Sorry, if you'll give me just a minute to locate that.
Cole, did you want to answer that as well?
Well, Madam Chair, I can, I can answer as it relates to the planning process, that the, when the building permits are pulled and construction starts, the entitlement is considered activated. And so the timeline is for, the validity of the entitlement is tied to the initiation of construction. Oh, I, oh, hold on, I just lost it again. I believe in here, it says.
Yes, I've located it now, Madam Chair. It's in Section 710, Annual Review. And this is mostly standard language that you have in development agreements to say that every 12 months during the term of the agreement, you have to, as a developer, continue to show good faith, substantial compliance with the agreement. So it's basically an annual check-in. But there was language added, and there's similar language in the housing agreement that was the other half of this Desert AIDS project here. And it says, notwithstanding anything to the contrary, upon issuance of building permits for the expansion project, the expansion project shall be deemed to have satisfied the obligation to make reasonable progress. So once you pull building permits, you come up to an annual review under the development agreement, there is no longer a basis to say you have not made reasonable progress because building permits have already been pulled. I will note that this is not typical language, but this was language that was negotiated into both the housing agreement and into this agreement.
It's a little bit perplexing, because that same paragraph, 710, says, in one place, it says that notice of annual review shall include the statement that any review may result in the amendment or termination of the agreement. Later in that same paragraph, it says that the city shall have no right to terminate or amend the agreement as a result of anything in the city review pursuant to 710.
That was, that was language that was negotiated in there, but if the Planning Commission has a contrary viewpoint, you're free to express that.
I just don't know what the viewpoint is. Does the city, as I read this, the obligations, there's nothing binding the applicant to anything, and it's great applicant, great use, but it is a leap of faith that nothing's going to change in 10 years. And I'm concerned that the city is obligating itself to doing street improvements, the city's obligating itself to all kinds of things, but doesn't have the ability to terminate the agreement for any reason. A part of it, as I said, that paragraph directly contradicts itself as to whether or not they do have the ability. And I don't know which it's supposed to be.
The purpose of that negotiated added language is that once DAP pulls building permits, the annual review basically just becomes the annual review and is not a basis to terminate or amend the agreement. And again, if the Planning Commission believes that that, you know, is too open-ended, you know, you're certainly, you know, free to express your thoughts on that.
Jim, what happens if they stop construction? Something happens and they, and they cease construction and never start it again?
Under this language, if they have pulled building permits, they are deemed to have made reasonable progress, and it is not a basis to terminate or amend the agreement if they pull permits and then cease construction midstream. And my understanding is that was the intent of this negotiated language.
Okay, we're still asking questions, so we're not resolving this right now, and we will keep this as one of the issues for our deliberations. Commissioner Maruzzi had his hand up.
Yes, you say it's a negotiated agreement, negotiated between obviously DAP, but what's the other party?
Well, this was negotiated between DAP and staff at this point, and now it is going up the chain to Planning Commission and then ultimately to City Council.
So we could inquire with staff why it was written this way?
We could also.
You can ask staff that if you'd like.
I'd like to ask staff that. Why was it written this way?
Well, I mean, this is, we used previous development agreements to mold this one, including the downtown, previous Virgin Hotel, and then also the Vista Sunrise Two. So it was used as a guide. This one is very similar, and it was reviewed by DAP's attorneys and also our city attorney itself. So obviously that there could be changes if the Planning Commission is not comfortable with it.
Okay, why don't we hold this to our discussions and see if there are other questions of staff or the applicant?
I do have a question that might get at the heart of the matter for me. Going into the negotiations or the discussion with the applicant, what did the city identify as the business points or the deal points that the city wanted to get out of this? Obviously, the city gives, gives up something, the developer gets something. What did the city want to get out of this?
Right, oh, Jim, sorry. Right. Oh, Jim, sorry. No, you're, you're gonna have to ask staff that one. Yeah. So we wanted to be able to, as part of the overall project, the improvements along Sunrise, that was important for the planning commission to make sure that the residents or folks aren't jaywalking across the street. So that's always been an important part of the, the project. And also to have a timeline, like you mentioned, to, if the city is going to go into a development agreement and invest those, those 10 years that we know that the project will get finished.
Okay, this, thank you.
Thank you. I understand what we're going for.
Second, I have a question if no one else does. And it's that we are, right now, we have a president who has just signed a $1.5 trillion infrastructure agreement. And I would like to leave some room in this that I think there was an agreement that the city would pay $80,000 for that street walk. But if they could, if they're able to fundraise with the federal government and do something better than what's planned, I would like to leave some room in this for that to happen. If there's a way of framing that. And I don't know if the planning director is still on the line?
Yes, I am. So in terms of the $80,000, the city can determine how it may want to contribute those funds. Whether we contribute them from our general fund or whether we contribute it from a grant, I believe that the city has the option to go about doing that. I don't know that there's anything special that we need to include in the language of the development agreement to do that. But we might do as part of the recommendation of the planning commission as this item is forwarded to the city council is just to indicate that use of grant funds would be appropriate for that $80,000 amount.
Okay. And are there any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hirschbain, I would like the applicant to talk about provision seven, 10, what that means for you in your negotiations. Mr. Baker?
And seven, 10 is what exactly?
That was the, the provision that said you'd fulfilled your conditions when you pulled the building permit?
I'm gonna transfer that over to Nicole, our engineer, for an answer to that. If Nicole's still on the line.
I am here. It was, frankly, it was not, it was brought over from the, from the CBHC development agreement, which we used as the base for this. It was, and, and I, at, at the time when I worked on the document, I interpreted it to relate to the activation of the, of the entitlement, which would, which would be the activity that DAP needed to, to perform in order to, to satisfy the 10, it needed to be activated within the 10-year term. And, and that is the limit of what I looked at as the, the meaning of the language.
So can I understand it needs to be activated but not completed within the 10-year term? Is that correct?
Right, that's, that's correct.
So there's no completion date?
In the schedule that you have, and I know that it's a little bit odd that, that the, the project starts, schedule starts in 2024 and ends while the agreement is for 10 years. That was a request of DAP that they have the 10 years for funding. Originally, we had it at five and we changed it to 10 for, to have, have DAP more time if they needed to fundraise to construct the project.
So they have 10 years to complete the funding to activate the entitlement is, is what you're saying. It's what this agreement does is if from the day council sees it, say it's January 14th of 2022, they would have till January 14th of 2032 to activate the entitlement?
That's what the agreement would, would allow.
But there's no, nothing that requires them to complete the work?
Not as it's written, other than the schedule that we have for the five-year shows it being completed within five years.
It is certainly, Madam Chair, DAP's intent not to start without having the ability to finish. That's part of the reason for the flexibility in time. Because this is, as, as I'm sure you're aware, this will be funded from multiple sources, multiple donations, multiple grants, much, multiple loans. And, and being able to gather all of those funds so that the project can move forward is, is the one question in, in a 501(c)(3)'s life when, when big improvements are proposed.
I've lived that life. I understand that completely. The only, would you have an objection to just saying, how long do you think the construction period is?
Sandra, I believe it's a two-year construction period?
Yes, that's absolutely right.
Why don't, if we added language that, added five years to complete the construction, once the, once you activated within at least 10 years, would there be a problem with that from your side?
I don't think that would be a problem.
I think that would be perfectly, very fair and acceptable.
Okay, the matter is before the commission, Commissioner Roulanian, last.
I had a question.
For the applicant? Or for staff?
Well, I'm not sure. So it's one of those.
Okay, the public hearing is still open.
Is the development agreement, does it tie the opening or the completion of the, of the Sunrise Way improvements to the opening of this building or the opening of the apartments?
No, it is, it's the apart, I'm sorry, it's the pavilion, completion of the pavilion is when sunrise improvements would occur.
And, and under the schedule, do, do the apartments get finished before the pavilion?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. So, so there'll be a period of time where the street remains as it is now while these apartments are being lived in?
Occupied, yes.
Okay. So, and I know we've beaten this one to death a while, but I, I, I don't think that's a good idea. I, I know there's a funding issue, but, you know, we've talked about making that safe for pedestrians going back and forth to the shopping center. And they're gonna be there, you know, who knows, maybe seven or eight years before the Sunrise Way improvements are done. And I was wondering if my fellow commissioners think that might be a problem?
Let's, let's take that, let's discuss that for a second. Once we get, once we've closed the public hearing, Commissioner Maruzzi had his hand up. I don't know him.
My first question is just to better understand what you were saying, Chair Wormick. With the five years of construction completion possibly occur, if it took 10 years before the building permits were pulled, then you start the clock for the five years of construction? So really, it's 15 years potentially?
Well, I keep it, I keep it as a 10-year to activate, to keep the entitlement alive, but have the applicant agree that they will finish construction and give them a five-year period after the activation of the entitlement?
It's 15 years.
Yes, Madam Chair, I, my concern would be that we're effectively turning this into a 15-year development agreement at this point. My, my understanding from staff and developer is that 10 years is going to be the outside envelope to get all of this done. There's also a provision in the development agreement that says they will comply with the attached schedule. And the attached schedule actually has them done before 10 years is up. So there are other binding timeframes in the agreement that I think they could do within, within the 10-year term. I, I don't know if we necessarily need to get into 10 years to get a building permit and then five years thereafter.
Agreement that they will complete, they will complete the construction. I think that's what we need.
Right. And they can do that in 10 years. You know, we could, we could have.
Have that agreement. Okay. Good question. Thank you.
To continue with my question. So regarding the, you're saying that somewhere in, Mr. Priest, somewhere in the agreement, there is, the, the schedule is specific that they have to complete within those in 2026 or?
Yes, there will be a final schedule that is going to be attached as an exhibit to the development agreement. And we've worded it to say this is the final schedule approved. It's not a preliminary or a draft schedule tentative. It would be a final schedule and it would be the binding deadlines for them to complete the work. If I may, Madam Chair, I would also add that language we talked about earlier at the end of seven point 10 that Commissioner Alain had mentioned. From our position, I, I don't know that that last paragraph is absolutely critical here. They would still be, you know, 10 years for them to develop. They could pull a building permit anytime during those 10 years and to complete the work. It would be done under the review of the city council annually, as with all development agreements. And they could make a determination whether there's good faith completion or good faith, what's the word I'm using? Good faith compliance, good faith progress. And you could still do that without this language there. This, this language does create an issue about once they pull the building permit, basically let go of review authority on that.
What's, what's, I'm just trying to get to closing the public hearing. Did Mr. Christ have a comment? I think I saw her hand.
Madam Chair, if I may, to address Commissioner Hirschbain's concern, CBHC is currently working on grant funds to, to do the improvements, including a crosswalk for the Sunrise Way improvements as part of their Vista Sunrise Two project. So they, everyone is aware that the Sunrise improvements are important and, and it is working hard to try to get those installed as quickly as possible.
But the, is the $80,000 the city's obligation in this?
Yes.
Okay, so you may be raising funds in addition?
Correct, for the, for the difference.
And when is the city obligated to give you that $80,000?
I believe it's with the construction of the improvements.
Okay, let's, let, I'm gonna, I, at this point, I'm closing the public hearing. The matter is before the commission. We have one or two questions in front of us. And let's talk a little bit about the public improvements. One suggestion I would have from the commission on the street improvements is the obligation of the city to provide the $8,000 should be tied to the completion of the residential building. If the applicant has pulled together the rest of the funds.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I may, I'll, I'll just note really quick, I'm looking at the agreement. Street improvements shall be completed by the city on a mutually agreed upon schedule established prior to issuance of grading permits. So grading permit for the pavilion triggers the obligation to have a mutually agreed schedule in place. But if the commission would like to make that more specific, you can certainly recommend that.
I would, I would like language there that is either grading permits or the completion of the apartment building, whichever is first. I don't know if anybody else has a problem with that, but I think our.
Is there a way we can get them? I, I know this isn't the apartment building agreement, but is there a way we can tie the opening of the apartments to the completion of the roadway? Because that's, to me, the, the goal.
I would tie the completion of the apartments to the obligation of the city to provide the funds.
So we're, aren't we just talking about the pavilion right now? Does any of this?
Well, what relates, we're talking about the pavilion, but they've tied in the street improvements, which are really related to the apartment building. So I'd just like to up the timeline on that as a recommendation from our commission for the reason that we're, it's a concern for public safety. And so I would do either or.
Madam Chair, if I could just point out one thing, and I apologize, I should have mentioned this earlier. This language is virtually the same to what we have in the Vista Sunrise Two agreement. So, you know, I mean, we, we could attempt to change it in here, but we still have this similar language in the.
And that agreement has been approved.
That was last year or earlier this.
I withdraw that. Let's, let's deal with, this is a great, I really want to get this done. I think the only issue we have is completion. So I, I think we want something that says both the extension of the entitlements and the completion of the project will be within the 10-year timeframe.
The agreement is already written to establish a 10-year term and the schedule could be revised to basically put the final completion certificate of occupancy date at whatever that appropriate 10-year date is. And that would be binding to the extent that there are milestones in the schedule that they need to meet. And if those are not met, if that language in seven, 10, that we've been talking about is removed, the city council would have continuing annual review authority to look and say, have you made good faith progress? Well, no, you haven't completed yet. We're not there, but you've missed this milestone. And if it's severe enough, that could be the basis for the council to amend or revoke the development agreement. But not with that language in seven point 10, that extra language that was negotiated, it would have to be removed.
Does the applicant have a problem with removing that?
No, Chair, we do not. Actually, the tenure is an extreme. We have, we're almost certain we have the financing to, to buy, to cut that time period down drastically, but we just don't want to go in writing at this point. And we're very, very, very close to having all the financing. So this is just really a belt and suspenders request for that 10-year period. I have absolutely no foreseeable idea that this would take more than 2024 at the outside.
So if we, we recommend this with that language removed, if I make a motion to that effect, would there be agreement here or is, is there, would there be an issue? So if people could speak to that?
I would feel comfortable with that.
Madam Chair, I would certainly agree to that. I, I think that's wonderful. I also asked the city attorney to take a look at the last sentence in seven point 09 and see if that needs to be revised as well. Because it says that the developer has a right to develop how and when they bloody well choose. And I'm paraphrasing here. And I'm not sure if that needs to be addressed as well.
We can, we can certainly take a look at that, Madam Chair. I don't believe seven point 09 necessarily needs to be changed. Seven point 09, as Commissioner Alain mentioned, is within that project schedule and within the term of the agreement, the developer has the prerogative when they do elements of the project to get it completed in the best manner. So I don't know that we need to change seven, but language in seven, 10, I would recommend striking, as we've discussed earlier. One other thing I would just mention, Madam Chair, is to avoid any disconnects, I would recommend, even if Desert Age Project has every intention of completing everything in three, four, five years, that a schedule be attached that actually pushes it out to 10 years to match the term. I don't want the city to be in an awkward position where the schedule says, finish it in five years, but the agreement says it has a 10-year term. They conflict to a certain extent there.
I completely agree with you on that. And I agree with not changing seven, 09, because I want them to be able to set their construction as they see fit and not have the city involved or liable in that regard. So that's the only change I would suggest. I'd suggest those two changes as a motion. I don't know if there's a second. So that's the only change I would suggest. I'd suggest those two changes as a motion. I don't know if there's a second.
I would second that.
And is there any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, will you call the roll? Commissioner Maruzi, sorry.
Yeah, I just, just one more time, Mr. Priest. So by leaving in section 7.09, removing 7.10, it's still a 10-year agreement, although the schedule for completion within it will be 2026.
Well, that, that's not what I'm recommending, Commissioner. I'm recommending 7.09 be left alone. And so within the project schedule, which really only consists of several large milestones, everything in between, 7.09 says that's up to the developer to just get it done how they see fit, as long as they're meeting the main milestones in the project schedule. 7.10 is the general provision that we have in all the agreements that says every year we can evaluate and see developer, are you making good faith progress toward completing the project consistent with the agreement? And everything in that section up to the last sentence is standard language that we put in all the DAs, but that last sentence was specifically added with the Vista Sunrise two project and has been held over for this one. But again, our advice is if you want to take that out, you can. It would still remain a 10-year agreement. You would have annual review. The council would have annual review. There would be a project schedule and they'd have to meet the milestones. So I don't believe removing that last sentence, you know, eliminates control. In fact, if anything, I think it gives the city additional control to review on this.
But you're recommending the entirety of section 7.10, not just the last sentence?
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry if you misunderstood. No, I'm not recommending removing all of 7.10.
Just the last.
Just the last sentence.
Was that everyone else's understanding?
Yes.
Okay, then I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. They have 10 years. The schedule will show an ending date 10 years from the date. We recommend removing the last sentence in 7.09.
7.10.
I'm sorry, 7.10. And we wish them the very best of luck. And hopefully we can take a vote on this. Would you call the roll?
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbahn?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzi?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Project is approved 6-0 with one abstention.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Best of luck. Invite us to the groundbreaking.
Yes, you will, for sure.
Yes, you will. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. It's only seven o'clock. Shall we keep going? Does anybody need a break?
Yes.
Anybody need dinner? Okay, 10, a 10-minute break until 7:13? We stand adjourned for until 7:13. The public, the conference planning commission is back in session. The next project in front of us is 2D. City of Palm Springs for a zone text amendment to amend sections 9, 3.23.01 of the Palm Springs zoning code relative to development standards for automotive service stations.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, as you'll recall, you reviewed a draft of this proposed ordinance at a meeting last month. At that meeting, you requested several changes to the draft ordinance. What I'd like to do is just go through those quickly for you. First of all, relative to the minimum building area for automobile service stations, staff had proposed a minimum area of 400 square feet. It was the opinion of the commission that that requirement should be removed and that that would be determined on a case-by-case basis. So I've removed the minimum square footage requirement. Associated with that, there was a comment from Planning Commission relative to the need to provide some type of protective space for staff members of the gas station. And so we've added language relative to protective space for employees, meaning that there needs to be a space as part of the gas station that is either heated or cooled for staff members if they are not outside the building. Another requirement that was removed from the ordinance at the request of the Planning Commission was the requirement for minimum lot area. We've removed that. Please keep in mind, however, for each zone district, there is already language there. So having it in this part of the ordinance was duplicative, and there is no real need to have it in this particular ordinance relative to service stations. Another thing that was modified was language relative to electric vehicle charging spaces. We've clarified that language and added a requirement that at a minimum, at least one charging space must be provided. I want to clarify that when we use the term charging space, it does mean that there is a charger there. It's not just pre-wired, but they will have equipment for people to charge their vehicle. Just to point out, in terms of the city's requirements, I believe last year we added language requiring electric vehicle charging spaces for commercial and multifamily residential uses. It's based on the amount of square footage. If, for example, with the Walmart facility that we looked at, based on its square footage that they were proposing, it wouldn't have been required to provide any electric vehicle charging spaces. So we did add language requiring at least one. The number of charging spaces is based on the number of parking spaces, and that's associated with the square footage of the building. So in this instance, at least one charging space will be required and potentially more if they do have a building of, you know, potentially 2,000 or 3,000 square feet, as is typical for most convenience stores. The other thing that we added is relative to restrooms. There was already language there requiring restrooms. I just wanted to confirm to you that we are keeping that requirement in there. That would also be required by the building code for the use. And so there is a requirement for restrooms for patrons of the gas station facility. One of the other issues that came up last month in our discussion was a concern about alcohol sales at gas stations. I want to reiterate to the Planning Commission that alcohol sales at a gas station would be included. that alcohol sales at a gas station would be included as part of the conditional use permit if the applicant chooses to do that. As part of that conditional use permit review, the Planning Commission would need to make findings that the alcohol sales are necessary and appropriate. And so ultimately, the sale of alcohol is a discretionary item that would be left to the Planning Commission determine if it would be appropriate. Based on actions that you've taken before, you found a couple of cases where it is not appropriate. And so this does not alter your ability to make that finding. Secondly, relative to the concern of saturation, is that in addition to the conditional use permit for alcohol sales, the applicant would also most likely need to request resolution of public convenience and necessity. As you may be aware, the state limits the number of licenses for alcohol sales based on census tracts. And in most of the city's census tracts, we're already at capacity. And so anytime there's the addition of a request for alcohol sales, typically, a resolution needs to be approved by the city council. And so that requirement would also still stand. So in addition to having to obtain the conditional use permit from the Planning Commission, there would also be the ability of the city council to review the appropriateness of alcohol sales at each location through the public convenience and necessity resolutions process. So I hope that addresses the concerns of the Planning Commission that were brought up last month. With that, I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation. And Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
What I'd like to do first is open the public hearing and then go through this page by page if there are questions on the changes. So are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Neal, has anyone called in?
No, Madam Chair, not for this item.
There being no members of the public who wish to speak, public hearing is closed. I think what I'd like to do is start on page one of the draft and just go through the changes. So if there are any questions anybody has on any of the changes on the pages, that would be the best way for us to address this. Are there any questions on page one? Are there any questions on page two? I have one on G, which is other activities such as electric chargers. Do we want to add chargers there? Because it says be limited to dispensing of gasoline, oil, water, air, electric chargers, or other activities. I think electric chargers should go there. Does anyone agree with me or disagree with me?
Well, I have questions about that. So electric chargers now require the space for cars to sit there for, what is it, a minimum of 30 minutes if they're fast chargers? And they could be sitting there a lot longer. So that, to me, would drive a very different design for the actual station. It would also require the station to be of a certain size where you could have cars parked being charged and still have other cars getting in and around to maneuver it. So I'd like to get staff's take on that specifically. If, if, if this is a zone text amendment, then we would be requiring charging at all future stations, correct?
Yes, and we were required at all commercial uses in the city as well, based on the amendment to our zoning code last year.
Okay, so the question is, do we want to add the requirement for charging to all future stations? I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about the stations that I go to on a regular basis. Most of them do not have the space for charging. For better or worse, they simply don't. So it sounds to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Fag, that we are now then going back to a minimum-sized station to house electric charging as well?
Not necessarily. We are requiring at least one space. That doesn't mean that they need to add building space for that. They just need to provide a space for charging. Also, in our zoning code, relative to the provision of electric charging spaces, it does not increase the number of parking spaces that you are required to provide by code. We allow the use of electric vehicle charging in spaces that are required for commercial uses. And so it doesn't necessarily increase the number of spaces that you have. Keep in mind that for new gas stations, you, as the Planning Commission, are going to be reviewing the site development plan, or the development permit, as we call it. And so you'll be able to assess the adequacy of the number of parking spaces on the site, both for convenience store uses, for pumping of fuel, or for electric charging, and approve or conditionally approve the site plan accordingly.
So that's, that's an interesting point. So we're not, we're allowing them to use required parking onsite for electric charging. So it's funny, I don't have an electric car. It wouldn't, it wouldn't come to my mind. Well, when I pull into a gas station, say I wanted to go in and get a bottle of water, I wouldn't pull into an electric charging space. That wouldn't feel right to me. So I'm wondering if by eliminating parking for the, well, not eliminating parking, but sharing the parking space with charging actually eliminates other parking. And, and I don't know how I feel about that. I'd be interested to hear what my colleagues think. But it's, it's an interesting issue for me.
If I might respond to that, as someone who does own a car that requires electric charging, I find that we are woefully underserved by electric charging spaces. And so consequently, a lot of us have concerns about how far we can go with our electric vehicles. Typically, when there is the availability of electric charging space at a commercial location, it's because I have a need to go there to begin with. So oftentimes, at a shopping mall or a similar facility, I'll be in shopping at the stores while my vehicle is charging. With a gas station, it's a little bit different in that if there's a convenience store, I'm only going to be in there for a few minutes. But if I do need to top off my car, if you will, with some additional electric charge, I'm definitely going to take advantage of doing that. Again, this comes back to the Planning Commission looking at new gas stations on a case-by-case basis to determine the sufficiency of parking spaces while providing this important service to those who have electric vehicles.
Okay, so one last question. Does the Walmart Shopping Center currently have any electric charging?
I don't know that it does, because it was developed prior to this requirement, and we haven't required businesses to come in and retrofit.
But we don't know if they've done it on their own to attract shoppers.
I don't know if they've done it on their own.
Okay, I would like to know that. Okay, thank you. That concludes my question on that.
We were just going through this. I was proposing adding this as one of the, the operations are limited to gasoline, oil, water, air, electric chargers.
I would agree, I would agree with that.
Okay.
And, and, and I know Commissioner Roberts was soliciting our opinion, and I'd just like to give mine. And I have a plug-in hybrid, so I also use electrical. And, and I got to say, I pass a whole bunch of gas pumps when I drive around Palm Springs, but I don't pass that many charging stations. So I'm in agreement that we could use more charging stations.
To add to that, that we haven't seen a site development design in which the parking spaces are limited. They're usually much more generous and over the requirement of the zoning regulations. So there's, there's, I could say there's plenty of space to put a charging station, in my opinion.
I don't have any issue with adding charging stations. Of course, it's a good idea. The question for me is, what are those impacts on each station? And if we're allowing them to eliminate parking to add charging, are we now taking away important parking within those places? I mean, my experience is when I go in for gas, people are using the convenience stores and gas stations constantly. There seems to always be a flood of people going in and out. So is it, is it right to allow required parking to be used for charging? Or should we require another space for charging outside parking requirement?
If you look at the number of electric cars in this group, I know that we have at least three here. I don't know if there are more. I would assume that the number of people who have electric vehicles is going to go up. Commissioner Irvin?
And, and in response to the question about the Walmart plaza with the electric stations, there is none there.
We're on the next page.
Page what number?
Page three. I have a comment on I. Accessible bathroom should be provided. Basically, unisex bathrooms. I think we, we've wanted to do that on everything.
I agree with that.
And basically, two, two, I guess it's two, at least two.
Yeah, I agree with that.
On that same one, can we require that they be open at any time the gas station is operation, operating?
Yes.
Yeah, I like that, too.
And do we want to provide air-conditioned space for the employees or conditioned space with seating? So somebody can at least sit down once in a while?
Well, does that, does that translate to just having a stool? I mean, if they're in a really small space where it's not a store you walk into.
I'd say with at least one seat. I just feel sorry for an employee who has to stand for an eight, a full eight-hour shift.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Sure. So are we requiring a chair? Are we requiring, requiring room for a chair? What specifically are we saying here?
I would say that we require a chair.
That each station provide a chair for each employee working?
For an employee. It does, I don't think we need for each employee, but there should at least be one chair that somebody can sit down on if they're feeling ill or...
Madam Chair, I might suggest that we're getting a little specific. Let me take the intent of what you mean relative to employees, and I'll craft it in such a way that might be appropriate to allow a certain degree of flexibility in terms of how that's accommodated.
Good.
Can I comment on the beer and wine, the other one, page three?
Yes, you're in number one. Okay.
Okay, yeah. So Director Fag, you said that we would have to find, make a finding that alcoholic beverage sales are necessary. And can you give me the example where that's, language has been attached to approval of alcoholic beverage sales, and what makes it necessary?
That language is found in Chapter 94 of the zoning code relative to the approval of conditional use permits. So each time you review a conditional use permit, you, as the Planning Commission, are making a finding that the proposed use is necessary and appropriate. So you've made that finding before for alcohol uses and other uses that require a conditional use permit.
I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just curious, so that there's some consistency in our thinking about this. What would make alcoholic beverage sales in a particular instance necessary?
You might look at where there are other stores in the vicinity. If there's an absence of stores for that, it provides a convenience for area residents, or something along those lines. Depending on the type of alcohol use, for example, alcohol uses related to restaurants or bars, you might say that the purpose of our downtown district is to provide entertainment and restaurant uses, and alcohol supports that. So again, depending on the alcohol use, there are findings that you, as the Planning Commission, can make that such a use is appropriate based on either your goals for a district or for the convenience of residents who live in the immediate area.
Well, appropriate's different than necessary. That's kind of what I was getting at. So could you say that you can make a finding that alcoholic beverage sales are necessary to enable a business to be economically viable? Would that be a finding?
Mr. Priest has tuned in, so I'm guessing that he has an opinion on this.
Sure, sure. The, the finding of necessity, necessary with alcohol, it's not like, you know, a fire extinguisher is necessary in a room where there could be a fire. It's not like that. It's, it's necessary and convenient. It's good, it's good development for the site that could be determined in conjunction with the restaurant onsite or the other business onsite, you know, being complementary. But at the end of the day, it's not a necessity in the way you might think of. I, we absolutely have to have this, but it would be what's, what's good development for the property that's not detrimental to the neighborhood and consistent with the CUP findings.
So, so we're saying necessary is the same definition as good?
It's, it, it's an appropriate development for the property that's not detrimental to surrounding properties. That's generally the way we apply that. Again, it's not necessary or necessity as in this development must, or this alcohol must go in on this site, or something like that. It's more, you know, is it consistent with our codes? Is it good development practice, and is it not detrimental? I, I would note that in state alcohol licensing law, when we override, overconf, an overconcentration, when it goes to the city council, it's called a public convenience or necessity certificate. And even though necessity is in the title, it's not really a finding of necessity. It's a finding of convenience. It's, it's going to fit in with the neighborhood. We can justify the overconcentration, because it's a net add to the community. It, it may have a different line of liquor beverages that other stores don't. So you're looking at it from that angle. So even though necessary and necessity are used, it's not, it's a little different than that.
Though I shouldn't focus on that word, then.
I, I think we want to move on. The question, what do you mean by 50% here, Flynn? Is they have to have 50% of groceries if they're going to sell liquor? Or they can't have more than 50% of the footage liquor? I couldn't get it.
It's the dollar sales. So 50% of the value or dollar sales of the products.
I, I think that's too much liquor. I think if we say 30% of the dollar sales, or they, they have to have 50% of the, the floor space. But I, I just, it does, I can't see why we would allow a convenience store to have 50% liquor.
Certainly, we can make that revision.
Does anybody else agree with me?
What number are you looking for?
I have a question about that.
I, I'm looking sort of 20 or 30%.
I have a question about that. Chair Wormuth?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Is this standard language, Flynn, this 50%?
This is language that is already in the zoning code. I wasn't proposing any changes to it.
And has there ever been a study that, to see what that actually means in terms of square footage versus the rest of the business?
We haven't done a study per se, but that's something that we have to verify every time we have a new alcohol use come in, in terms of a gas station.
Because I'm assuming what Chair Wormuth is implying is that alcohol is more expensive than most of the items that are sold in a convenience store. And so therefore, 50% could be an off. And so therefore 50% could be an awful lot of alcohol. Or maybe it's the opposite. Maybe my math isn't working right, but 50% of value, I don't really know what that means exactly because I don't know what kind of liquor they're selling, you know?
If you could compare it, $50 worth of alcohol versus $50 worth of Twinkies, you have to sell a lot of Twinkies to add up to $50.
Probably sell a lot of Twinkies. So if nobody else wants to touch that, I don't, if it's standard, I will.
I'm, I'm happy to reduce the number. I, I agree with you.
Me as well.
Okay, can, should we take this to 30 or 20? 25? Somebody suggest a number.
I'm good with 25. I think 20, 25. I don't know. 20, 25?
Do, Flynn, do we have anything to go off of that is somewhat of a standard that gives us an idea?
I wouldn't say that there's any type of a generalized standard in planning circles relative to the percentage of alcohol sales at a gas station.
What did we do at Tower Market?
At Tower Market, I believe we were 25% if I remember correctly, and I'm doing that off the top of my head.
Well, I'd go, I, I'd go with whatever we approved at Tower because we beat that one to death too.
Are you saying we're beating this to death? I agree. So 25, we've got 25. Does anybody have any changes on the last page? So I think we have only, to sum it up for a motion, we have one change just to add electric chargers, chargers to the things that they're limited to do outside. We've added unisex restrooms. Flynn will figure out some soft way of saying maybe they should let somebody sit down for 10 minutes. And liquor is 25%. And that's it. I think the only, the discussion item in everything was just whether we thought electric vehicles. I only heard one person concerned about the electric vehicles, charging stations. So I think we're, unless I hear more, I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Irvin, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to accept the, the items that you made for the altercation and I'll accept the, anybody second the motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschblatt?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Muzi?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Chairwoman?
Yes. Okay, moving very quickly along. The next item, and then the final public hearing is 2E City of Palm Springs for a zone text amendment to amend chapter 92 and chapter 93 of the Palm Springs zoning code relative development standards for the M2 manufacturing and E1 in energy industrial zones. Can we have a staff report? And we've, we've had some discussion about whether or not we should be taking this on tonight or taking on only the north side of E1. Staff report?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, the item that you have before you is a request to amend the development standards for the M2 manufacturing zone and the EI energy industrial zone. This is coming before you based on conversations that we've had with applicants relative to recent proposals for warehouse facilities and fulfillment center facilities in the north end of Palm Springs. In terms of the zones, they're located in the vicinity of the I-10 freeway and North Indian Canyon Drive. The issues that we've been running into relative to the existing development standards are primarily related to the height of buildings that's allowed in those zone districts. And then also a concern on the part of staff relative to the adequacy of parking requirements for the proposed uses. In terms of the location of the zone districts, the EI and M2 zones are only found in the northern area of the city. As you can see here on the map surrounded by the red border, the EI zone is the zone there shown in teal and then the M2 zone is shown in purple. Here is the I-10 freeway, if you can see where my cursor is. And then here on the very southern part of the boundary is the railroad tracks. And so again, this is the only area in the city where those two zones are found. Just to give you an idea of the context, here's a map showing the north end of Palm Springs. Here is the desert island gateway area here. So up North Indian Canyon and centered primarily around the Interstate 10 and North Indian Canyon interchange. It's not in the area by Whitewater. You'll recall that last year, I believe it was, we had a pre-application for a fulfillment center in that area. The area at Whitewater is zoned HC highway commercial and we are not proposing to make any changes to the development standards in that zone district at this time. So the EI zone and the M2 zone showing its location relative to the rest of the city. One of the questions that I've had from commissioners relative to this proposal is, are any conservation areas impacted? Here on this map is a map from the Coachella Valley Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan showing conservation areas. The Whitewater floodplain is adjacent to this area. But as we look at a blow up of that area here in the red circle, the Whitewater floodplain area ends at the railroad tracks. And so the EI and the M2 zones are completely out of any designated conservation area. One more map just showing you the Whitewater floodplain area. That is the area shown here in green. The ponds that we have here in this area are to the south of the area in question. Here is the I-10 freeway cutting across here and then the railroad line which serves as the southern boundary for the EI zone district. So hopefully that helps you to understand where we are relative to conservation areas and that these two zone districts do not encroach into any designated conservation area.
Are they in the blow sand district?
We do have blow sand in this area, but it's not a designated area on the MSHCP plan.
Flynn, the blue line there, does that define this, that's the city boundary? So where is, where, where is this environmental zone?
So the green area is a conservation area, the Whitewater floodplain.
And where was the, this fulfillment center that was withdrawn? Where is that?
Okay, so let me back up a slide.
And the perp ponds are where too?
Excuse me?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So in terms of the Whitewater area, looking at this map, it was the blue area HC here. And then going to the conservation map, and I'm going to apologize, it's going to be difficult to see. But it's adjacent to this area that's shown as Highway 111. It was just immediately north of that.
Okay. So is this M1 or M2, E1, EI? Is that adjacent to any of these ecological zones?
It's adjacent to the Whitewater floodplain, but doesn't encroach into it.
Right, okay. And that's the only ecological zone that it's adjacent to?
Correct.
Isn't it adjacent, aren't the, aren't the gray areas the perp ponds for the aquifer?
Here is the perp ponds, this gray area surrounded by green.
So that's, that just feels a little bit close to where aquifer gets, um, gets filled?
How close is that Flynn? Can you give us an idea?
I can. After I finish my presentation, what I need to do is stop sharing my screen and go to a different screen to be able to measure that distance for you.
I just measured it from the north side of the railroad to the perp ponds, about 1,500 millimeter feet.
Flynn, are any of the proposed projects on the south of the freeway side?
In terms of the conversations that we've had with potential applicants, no. They've all been north of the I-10 freeway. Unless there are any other questions, let me move into what is being proposed to modify in those two zone districts. First of all, as I had mentioned, height has been an issue with the proposed facilities that we've looked at. Currently in both the M2 and the EI district, there is a 30-foot base height limit with the possibility of going up to 40 feet. What we're proposing is to modify that to keep the 30-foot base height limit, but allowing 60 feet in height if, number one, the parcel is a minimum of at least one acre in size. Number two, it's a minimum of 1,000 feet or more from the freeway right of way. And then number three, that the project provides one foot of setback for every one foot in height relative to the property lines. So for example, if the building is 60 feet in height, it would need to be a minimum of 60 feet away from any of the perimeter property lines. Secondly, we're proposing a height of up to 95 feet if the parcel has a minimum acreage of five acres. Number two, it's 1,000 feet or more from the freeway. And then number three, also maintaining that one-to-one setback from property lines. In terms of the height, what we looked at was standards for how these types of facilities are developed. In the staff report and in the backup materials, we identify that there's two basic types of systems that we see. The first is what's called a narrow aisle racking system, which requires a building height of approximately 55 to 60 feet. This type of system is based on a forklift which is used to maneuver in the aisles and then picks products from the shelves that you see in the racks there. And this is entirely based on two things. Number one, it's based on the height of the forklift and how high that equipment can go. And then secondly, it's based on the type of fire sprinkling system that is permissible for these types of storage systems. And so that height limit is ultimately limited by those two factors. And so that's why we're proposing a 60-foot height limit as one of the options available under these development proposals. The second type of system used for storing goods is a mezzanine racking system. And this is more common in the fulfillment centers where you have staff members who are picking items from shelves and then packing those and shipping those off to customers. And so with this type of system, there really isn't any type of a height limit that's mandated by either equipment or fire sprinklers. What we are suggesting to the planning commission is that a 95-foot height limit be proposed for those types of systems. And so again, the height limit is based on the two different types of systems that we typically see with warehouses and fulfillment centers. The next area is relative to modification of parking requirements. Currently, we have a requirement of one space for every 800 gross square feet. One of the concerns that staff has had relative to these types of centers is that as you start to get into larger facilities, you start to see a decrease in the number of staff members that are needed for the facility. And so looking at a 1 million square foot facility under our current code, it would require 1,250 parking spaces, which may grossly overstate the parking need. And so if an applicant is to provide the number of spaces currently required under the code, it ultimately winds up being much more asphalt or paved area on the site than is actually needed for the use. There are some impacts to that, both environmental and other impacts that we see. Number one, it adds to the urban heat island effect when you have parking spaces that aren't occupied surrounding the built environment. And then number two, in terms of stormwater runoff, it increases the amount of runoff that occurs. And so for that reason, what we would like to do is propose that the parking, amount of parking be reduced based on the square footage of the building. So what we're proposing is a similar standard that we've seen in other cities where you have more or less a graduated requirement once you get over 100,000 square feet. And so one of the other things that I want to point out is that with these facilities, there are often quite a few loading spaces that are required. The loading spaces would be over and above the minimum parking requirements that we are proposing. There's a number of other modifications that are very minor in nature that we're proposing relative to the lot coverage. We're standardizing the lot coverage at 60%. That's currently the standard in the M2 zone. We would propose that for the EI zone as well. We're reducing the percentage of landscaping that's required in the front buffer area, reducing that from 25 to 15%. Keep in mind however, that there are also buffering requirements for parking lots that are required in the zoning code in another chapter of the zoning code. And you as the planning commission and architectural review committee will be reviewing those landscape buffer areas to make sure that they are appropriate. And then there's other minor corrections to the text and code references. I will point out that Commissioner Song found a couple of references that I missed. And so Commissioner Song, I will require, will update and revise those two that you pointed out to me. So I appreciate that. With that, that concludes my presentation on the modifications. And the city is the applicant. However, you may have members of the public who wish to offer public comment on this item, Madam Chair.
What I'd like to do before questions is open the public hearing, have the public comment and then go into questions with staff. There is one member of the public who's requested to speak, correct?
I'm getting in touch with the speaker now, Madam Chair. So just one moment, please.
While Mr. Newell is doing that, if there's anyone else here who was on the Zoom cast this evening, if you would just use the raised hand symbol if you would also like to speak.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have Mr.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have Mr. Jerry Keller on the line. Mr. Keller, you have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin. Mr. Keller? Yep, are you there?
Can you wait one second to see if I can get you in my earpiece?
Yes, we can wait a moment.
All right, I think if you could. Hello?
Yeah, you are ready to go. You have three minutes.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, Jerry Keller from Lululeah, California. I'm gonna wear two hats tonight. It's interesting. One, of course, is for Palm Springs City. The more business we can bring in, that's gonna make the city more successful and more solvent. I think it's really important, so that's one hat. The second hat is my publishing hat. I've been in business publishing for more than sixty years. And the only current magazine media group we have left is for supply chain. And a big part of supply chain is warehousing and distribution centers. So I'm pretty familiar with the structure and the potential for the distribution centers that should go up in that area. First of all, it's not future business, it's current business. This is exactly the way this industry is going. This type of distribution center is very important. It's extremely well-run, very efficient, and quite profitable. And it's a perfect location for it. There's no residential around it, lots of freeway ramps. There's no problem with the height. And it really is a perfect business for Palm Springs areas like this. I just think it's something that's a no-brainer for us. It's just exactly what we should be looking for in areas like this. And it's successful, if this works, and it will work. There'll be others coming in like it. It's very simple. If they don't do it in Palm Springs, they'll find some other place to do it. But this is the perfect location, it's the perfect building for that location. And it has my total recommendation to do it. So thank you for your time. It's an exciting project, it's good, and I hope you improve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? If not, the public hearing is closed, and the matter is before the commission for questions. Commissioner Marutse.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when I drive Interstate sixty and I see these massive warehouses and distribution centers, I find them to be monstrous and completely inappropriate, particularly in the setting of our desert. And I would not be supportive of encouraging these massive warehouses to be built in our, at least within our city. They're just too large. I think we should keep the original height limit of thirty feet. And if these massive, monstrous warehouses want to move down valley, then so be it. But I don't think we, as a city, should encourage these awful-looking boxes in our beautiful desert. I mean, that's what makes our desert different. And I don't think we want to see an endless line of these distribution centers, not just in our city, but moving up and down the freeway. So I think they're awful, and I would never support any change of height limit to encourage these things to be built.
Any other comments? Commissioner Lenian?
Thanks, I actually have a couple of questions for staff. One is, Director Pratt, can you tell us the economic benefits of, I'll do separately, warehouse and then of a fulfillment center? Other than property tax, what type of revenue would they be generating, if any, for the city? Are they considered, is a fulfillment center considered a point of sale? Do we get sales tax?
I believe that it is, that we do reserve, we do receive some benefit from fulfillment centers in terms of sales tax revenue. But I couldn't give you any specific figures in terms of what that would be.
Okay, and how about for warehouses?
Warehouses probably less so, because warehouse is for storing goods rather than for sale of merchandise and shipping to customers.
Okay, and then as far as job generation goes, the studies that I've seen indicate that fulfillment centers don't, over the near term, over a year or maybe two, there is an increase in employment in a county where a fulfillment center comes in. But then that increase disappears completely after two years. Do you have any information on on job generation, job growth, long-term economic impact in that regard? And how high-paying or low-paying are those jobs?
Based on our conversation earlier today, you're aware that, no, I don't have any information to provide to you. Generally, the jobs that we see at fulfillment centers are not the same type of high-paying jobs that you would see in the tech industry, for example. So they are going to be lower-paying jobs, but it is a diversification of our economy from being tourist-based, which is one of the things that we, as a city, need to look at.
Okay, one of the things I noticed in the resolution that was prepared, the draft resolution, was talking about conformance with the general plan and some of the goals that are there. And then, for example, one was for land use, number four, attract and retain high-quality, sustainable commercial development. The staff report says that this would do this. Can you connect for me how, in particular, the large, I'm not talking about the wind energy, but the large warehouses and/or distribution centers would attract high-quality, sustainable commercial development, not industrial?
Not industrial? I'm sorry. What do you mean by that?
Well, the general plan distinguishes or differentiates between commercial and industrial. And the goal in the general plan talks about sustainable commercial development. Does not talk about, and it doesn't mention industrial. So I'm wondering how warehouses would contribute to sustainable, high-quality commercial development, retail or what have you?
Yeah, so in terms of the city's areas that are set aside for industrial uses, certainly we want to see those grow and thrive as well. Not only our C-one or CBD commercial districts. So contributing to the overall health of the city of Palm Springs in both our commercial and industrial areas is certainly a goal of the general plan. Wouldn't you agree?
No, I agree. I'm just not sure how large distribution facilities out near the ten contribute to anything in the CBD commercial zones. Trying to follow that thing.
Yes, as you look at the descriptions for the land use categories, and in particular for the industrial categories, certainly the general plan talks to the need of enhancing and expanding those types of uses in the areas where it's appropriate to do so.
So this would be an enhancement?
It's a use that we don't currently have and one that won't come here unless we make revisions to our development standards.
Okay, and then the last question I would have is, one of the goals in the general plan, land use number seven, is to maintain and enhance the city's status and image as a premier resort destination and cultural center. How do you see these types of uses that this would promote tying into that goal?
Keep in mind that this does not impact our resort areas in terms of the development of tourist facilities. This is an industrial area that's primarily for the use of manufacturing, light industrial, and then energy-related uses. These are necessary services that help to not only serve citizens of Palm Springs, but citizens of the greater Coachella Valley and ultimately the region. So it does not impact our existing areas for the development of tourist facilities and is wholly separate from that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. My concerns lean more to environmental impacts. So I was very concerned with the concept of having one of these facilities within fifteen hundred feet of where our groundwater is stored. So in my understanding of how these facilities operate, they have hundreds of trucks coming on a daily basis to bring and take goods away. Those trucks leak. Those trucks are spewing exhaust, and they leak liquids, fluids, oils, petroleum, lots of things. And perhaps it can be mitigated, but my first instinct is that these should not be on the south side of the highway anywhere near the aquifers. That we really should, if we're going to consider them, be on the north side. I'm not opposed to a facility like this. I'm opposed to saturation of them. I think they're a reality for our life today as we live and that they probably add to quality of life for the Coachella Valley to a degree. Putting them way north on the highway, you know, frankly, I don't think they're any uglier than any other buildings or windmills. They're part of the built environment. So again, I wouldn't be opposed to having one here or there, but not a lot of them. But I do feel very strongly about the impacts on the aquifers and their proximity to the aquifers, and then to look at mitigation techniques for what these trucks would leave behind. And that might be as simple as requiring concrete pads versus asphalt within the bays of where these trucks park to load and unload, where concrete could better capture any fluids. And we could talk about how those fluids are mitigated after the fact. So to start the conversation, those are my concerns.
Commissioner Song? And I think we're beginning to hear people's positions on this and concerns. So if you want to go in that direction, Commissioner Song?
Yeah, I wanted to align with Commissioner Roberts' question is, Director, is there, we can compartment, I mean, we can take smaller steps in which this could be considered for only M-two and leave E-one as is? Is it the size limitation that's gonna break the, you know, the deal?
I don't know that I can speak to breaking the deal, but you, as the planning commission, could make a determination that you may only want to consider these changes for the M-two zone. And certainly that might be the recommendation that you make to the city council.
Okay, and then also, Director, the FedEx building, which is in this vicinity, have they performed? Have they been problematic in any issue? Have there been any environmental issues that you are aware of? Because I believe they've been built for five years or more than that?
Yeah, actually, they've been built for at least seven years. Facility was approved and permitted prior to me coming here to the city of Palm Springs. So I know that they've been in operation at least that long. I'm not aware of any environmental issues relative to the facility. I don't know that I've seen any violations or things like that relative to the FedEx facility.
Okay. So those are the questions I have for now.
Mr. Frack, what is the height of those? What are the heights of those buildings, FedEx?
The FedEx facility, I believe it's right at forty feet.
Thirty-eight.
Do we have any that are up to ninety-five feet tall?
No, we don't currently.
This proposes within a thousand, well, a thousand feet would be the boundary that this could, these ninety-five-foot buildings could be.
Correct, it'd have to be at least a thousand feet away from the freeway right-of-way.
The only thing that we have as close to a thousand feet are the windmills sort of in front of the railroad tracks. There's a new section of them that I think were approved in 2019, and they go up to a thousand feet.
Right, but they're a single pole, yes.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, if you want to think about height. Commissioner Irvin?
I would also lean a little bit to Commissioner Marutse as well. I've seen some of those buildings off the sixty, and they look like big giant eyesores. With the low-wage positions, our city housing is not able to support all of these low-wage positions that we're having with the tourism. We have already quite a bit of low-wage positions in our city. Bring in more low-wage employment. These people cannot afford to live in the area of our city. So I just, I wouldn't be in support of it. It doesn't seem like it'd bring anything to our city. And the height is just, the buildings just look awful to me.
Commissioner Hirschstein? You're muted.
Thank you. In terms of economic benefit, I'd like to drill down on this tax that would be generated for the city. I don't see how that's possible. I mean, somebody in Palm Desert goes on the internet and orders a package be delivered to her, his or her house, and it comes from a warehouse or a fulfillment center that's within the city of Palm Springs. I don't see how the state can even begin to allocate that specific tax-generated amount to Palm Springs. I don't think there's any mechanism for that, is there?
Can I, my understanding is that they do.
How?
That it's the point of sale, and therefore the tax goes, the sales tax goes to the point of sale out of the fulfillment center. That's my understanding. I don't know if I
Wouldn't the point of sale be Palm Desert in that example?
No, it's being sold. I think that's correct.
So they're
I'm gonna be honest with you, Madam Chair, I can't specifically speak to where point of sale is under tax regulations there. We'd have to come back, and I could look into that for you if you'd like.
Well, if we're gonna maybe table this or ask for some more discussion, I'd like to know that. The other thing is, I'm kind of of two minds about this, but I agree with, let's see, I think it was Commissioner Roberts that talked about an oversaturation of these buildings. an oversaturation of these buildings. And I think one way, if we're going to approve them at all, and I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm going to approve them at all, but one way to address that might be what Colton and Desert Hot Springs does, which was require a CUP for buildings over what the existing height is. And maybe that way it will allow future sort of distribution or mitigation of that impact.
That's, I think that's an interest, I think allowing a CUP makes sense. I'm with Commissioner Roberts in that I do not think they should be on the south side of the freeway. There's something very nice about driving into Palm Springs either on Highway 111 or coming across 10 and seeing desert. It's, it, I think that does create the tourist experience. And it's not, it may be not where we have our hotel rooms, but it's where people see our mountains and anticipate where they're going to be visiting. So especially on the south side, I think it's too close to the whitewater wash. It's too close to the perk ponds. I don't think anything should happen there. I'm more open on the north side, but I'd like to see some mitigations. And I think the CUP to not have over-concentration makes sense. And part of my saying the north side has more to do with, I do think it's a point-of-sale issue. So I think we lose a lot of sales taxes when we buy from Amazon and it comes out of a fulfillment center in Fontana. Commissioner Maruzzi.
No, I agree with what you're saying, but I think that applies also to the north side of the freeway. You know, to me, twenty years from now, you know, we could say how much tax revenue we received, sales tax revenue from these buildings, but I don't think we should be sacrificing desert views. We're talking about potentially ninety-five-foot-tall, enormous rectangular box on five acres of land. It's just, why should we encourage that? For tax revenue or otherwise, you know? And the issue that Commissioner Irvin brought up is that these are mostly low-paying jobs. And, you know, you're sacrificing the future of our desert for short-term revenue gains, or maybe long-term revenue gains. But it's just, it's just wrong. You know how passionate people were, I know it was on the south side of the freeway, when that warehouse was proposed off that ramp? It wasn't strictly because it was adjacent to, you know, a nature preserve. Or, you know, it was because it was just wrong. It's this monstrous thing in the desert. And I just don't think we should encourage that. I just don't. And I just, it would go down in my conscience if they said, well, let's go ahead with that because, you know, the tax revenue is great and it's going to happen anyway. Yeah, but why does it have to happen in our city?
Commissioner Ryan.
I have to, after listening to several of the other commissioners, agree that I don't think it's appropriate development for Palm Springs and for the quality of life, the reasons why we all choose to live here. As I look at some of the other model cities, whether it's Colton or Fontana or Moreno Valley, none of these are cities that I would choose to live in or that I would want to model Palm Springs after. The size, I think, is completely out of context with the desert natural resources and what we have here. Certainly to be convinced, and perhaps I could be, to be convinced, I would have to know more about the economics of it. From what I've been able to learn, I'm not convinced that it would provide, that these types of development would provide an economic advantage to Palm Springs. I am a fan of what CVEP is doing and the job growth and the industries that they are courting and with the idea of the types of technology businesses, small startups going through the incubator and accelerator programs, the things that pay real wages. I would rather see us do things, make changes. If we're going to change the built environment of Palm Springs, let's do it for something that is more meaningful rather than quick and easy and done in plenty of other cities.
So as I'm counting noses, I have three noes, and I don't know where the other four people sit on this. So Commissioner Song, you're on the hot seat.
Thank you. I was thinking that in order to be productive is to come along with the idea that the current ordinance stands with thirty feet as base height, and that's what we're going to proceed with. And then maybe even look at the parking ratios with a thirty-foot height. And the decision is to work it with the current conditions and make it better so that if an applicant does want to come in, they will design it within the current conditions. That would be the way I'm approaching this. The second thing I was thinking is that, for me, the better argument would have been if by increasing the size, not to a thousand feet, but, I mean, a hundred feet, by increasing the size that they could have a renewable or a responsible energy usage. And then also that they would do a, they would create a natural habitat to offset the monstrosity that they're going to be building. So some argument in which they can balance what they were, what they were trying to propose would probably be presented better than, and I understand that these are sort of the law, the rules that we're trying to put together. But without the story, it's hard to make an argument. And the only argument I could probably ask for is, it doesn't reduce the trips of the semi-trucks by having this halfway point here? I'm not saying that that will convince me, but would that again make an argument of how this is going to be a responsible development? So just because I went around and around, my attitude is that the current conditions is what we need to improve and not allow a deviation. And second, if there is an idea that we are going to deviate, that we don't put it as CUP and make the applicant go through all the application and then later on find out that is not a viable project. Let's just straight out tell them what is possible or not.
So I'm sort of thinking that is a fourth no. So Chair, where do you stand on this?
Are you asking specifically on the height increase?
Well, I think you've already said no to the south side.
Yeah, so if I understand this right, and staff, please help me, what we're, these are already essentially allowed. What we're looking at is a height increase, correct?
Correct, the use would be allowed, but it's the height that really prevents the development of these types of facilities.
Okay. So again, my concern, you know, putting them way out north on the highway, it would be helpful to know the economics, the true benefits. I'm not opposed completely to them. My bigger concern is saturation and ecological. I was very impressed with some of the suggestions of Commissioner Song in that I think that we can mitigate their environmental impacts by requiring them to backfill somewhere else, meaning do some of the things that she suggested, like have their energy sources be sustainable and have them create environments on the ground that are, you know, that encourage natural habitat and so forth. How do I feel about the height? I can't say I have a strong feeling either way. Thirty, forty, sixty feet? It depends on exactly where they're being asked to go. So if it's right off the highway and it's, it is using some of the descriptions that others are using here, you know, going to be this horrendous massive thing, well, if it's set way back off the highway, it may not have those kind of impacts. So to me, it's more about where they're going. Do I want to see ninety feet, a thousand feet off of the highway? No. But maybe for every ten feet they move up, they have to move back further and further away from the highway so that their impact is dramatically minimized. The desert's a big place. We already have a lot of industrial uses out there. And much of the area that is being considered is already flooded with windmills. I don't think they're particularly pretty, but they're there. And they've been approved and continue to be approved, and they offer something good back. I'm rambling here. I guess I'm not opposed to a height increase if they're pushed further and further away from the highway so their visual impacts aren't bad. I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues and what I feel myself is we want to dig deeper into these standards and make them more sustainable and find out more about their finances and make sure their ecological impacts are minimum to none. Does that help, Chair?
Yes. So Commissioner Hirschbein, I heard you wanted more information on finances. I don't know where you came on this issue. Do you want it sent back so that we study it more?
Yeah, I think that's a good summation of where I'm at. I honestly came into this thinking, well, you know, it's the wave of the future. This is where it's going. We can make some, chew around the edges of it, like maybe not south of the town, et cetera. But, you know, hearing from fellow commissioners, there's strong objection to it. I'm beginning to reevaluate that. I haven't gotten to prohibit it, but I'd like to see staff come back. Well, number one, with what is the true economic benefit? Like assume a certain amount of money per square foot of, or sales per year per square foot of one of these facilities and how much of that comes directly back to Palm Springs as opposed to going into some general fund for the state? And then I like, I like the idea of the further, the taller it is, the further back it is. And I also like the idea of it not being this continuous wall for a mile or two, but that there be some gaps and figuring out if that's through a CUP or for some other method so we're not overburdened with these things. But I'm not, I'm not committing to a position. I'm just saying that I'm a little bit open, so. Does that help?
Yep. So as a fourth person, Commissioner Maruzzi, you had said absolutely not. Were you changing that in any way?
Well, no, I'm not. But if we're talking about potentially having a resolution that says we should look at this further in the future, one of the things I'd like to have included is, what distance is this Skechers factory from the freeway? Is it a thousand feet? I mean, that, you know.
Skechers is in a particularly different configuration because it's below the freeway. So even if it's ninety feet, you might only see the top forty-five feet or something. And I think the freeway where we are goes up, you know, the land goes up to the north. So if it's ninety feet on top of a raised elevation, it's going to be even that much higher. So I don't know that that's a particularly relevant.
No, you have to make a good.
Benchmark.
Just I find the Skechers thing to be one of the most ugly monsters I've ever seen. And imagine how if that was, like you say, elevated, that would even be worse. But, you know, Commissioner Song made some excellent points. I mean, I would have gone with a motion that said, let's stick with the current height limit and then let's look at ways of making that area, you know, better, maybe fewer parking spaces, other things that could be helpful. That would have been my, I would have supported that.
I would also support Commissioner Song's notion about a certain amount of land being preserved. If we allow X, we should get Y in exchange for it. I don't know what that number is, but I think it's a good proposal. I like that proposal.
But I know there is a formula, like for instance, in the project near Rimrock, wasn't there some trade-off between land that they were going to be taking away from, you know, natural habitat? And then there was exchange for areas within the wash or something? I mean, I guess there is a formula for exchanging negatives for positives.
There was a formula for buying land off-site to preserve the beetle, which is what I think happened. It wasn't Rimrock, but it was the property on the other side.
Near Rimrock, yeah.
Near Rimrock. And so because they destroyed, they were going to destroy the beetle habitat on that land, they would buy other natural, other land with it. But that could be a solution to it. I'm still, you know, I agree with you that what we've seen coming up the sixty is just awful. And it doesn't look like Palm Springs and destroying our vistas is not a good thing. I'm not sure that some of the vistas aren't destroyed on the north side. I can't, I haven't quite, because we do have some plants there. We have a couple of major plants that were, they're pretty far back, so you don't see them.
Are they ninety-five feet tall?
Flynn, do you know the height on those two? There's two.
On the peaker plant?
On the peaker plant and then the other one.
I don't know off the top of my head, but that's something that we can research for you and provide that information.
But those are nowhere near the scale of what's being proposed.
No, they won't be the same scale. They're the same height, but they're a small box compared to what's being proposed. But I'm adamant about not on the south side of the freeway where we've got our perk, our perk, you know, perk ponds, where we're getting our water roaring down for the aquifer. I think that's, I just don't think we should do, we should do it.
Did you have an idea that if we brought this back, what would we actually be doing?
I don't, I think one of the ideas is, is distance and mitigations and trying to figure out where things might go and how it might look. I don't know.
I won't support any of that, I'm sorry. No, I mean, we can have the discussion, but ultimately I don't, I can't support a ninety-five-foot building on a five-acre site. But, you know, all the other discussions are fine. I just don't, I can't support that. That's just where I would go if we had this further discussion.
Director Fag, we have an application, correct?
No.
We don't?
No.
We don't have any.
Conversations.
This is purely, what is triggering the request for increased height then?
What is triggering the request is the proposals that we've seen thus far would all require either a variance from the height limit, which you're never going to be able to make the findings, or we could try and apply the city's high-rise building ordinance to that, which requires a conditional use permit, but has other factors which just don't make sense in the industrial area. And so height is really the key thing that is prohibiting any projects from coming forward to you. And that's what's generating this, is that are we eliminating a potential development type which may have some benefits to the city of Palm Springs by the fact that our zoning code is out of date and doesn't address that particular type of development?
All right, well, you know, from what I'm hearing, there's not a lot of support for just increasing height, or certainly not without making lots of other changes. And I'm also hearing that we want to look at these standards in general. If these, if we don't have an applicant currently, but the concern is that we may have applicants and do we want to encourage or discourage this type of use? We should be talking about it. So I guess what I would suggest is that we continue this and have it come back and look at all standards for this type of use, for this type of application. It's always helpful when we have an applicant because it forces us to. But development standards are something that we need to stay ahead of in a changing world, right? And, you know, a conditional use permit is the easy way out. We simply say, let's look at them on a case-to-case basis. Maybe their impacts can be mitigated. I think the one on Highway sixty is a terrible design because. because not necessarily the height of it or even the size of it. It's because there's no plantings. There's, we're just seeing the trucks. We're seeing it all. Maybe they can be designed in such a way that they're not ugly. Maybe we can hide them a lot in trees and landscaping and desert scape. So I want to suggest that we bring this back if it's being asked for us to look at it, but let's look at all standards on it. And let's look at real mitigation procedures. So at any time, we could have had an application for one of these up to 30 feet. We just haven't. And you're suggesting we're not seeing them because 30 feet doesn't, won't satisfy any of the applicants? Okay, that's my suggestion.
Is there a motion?
Okay, yes.
So let's go ahead and continue this to a date uncertain. And then we'll go ahead and look at all of the recommendations of the planning commission and bring additional information back to you and suggestions.
And frankly, does the council have a position on this?
The council hasn't seen this yet.
Okay. Again, I'm just wondering specifically where this is driven from. But if the council has a position, I'd like to know what it is.
Can I speak to that? There is a project, there's an applicant looking at a couple of different, our city and another city. That's what I've heard because I've gotten a phone call about it, which I communicated with the director. I don't know if he heard. I don't think they're an applicant yet. But there was, there was a request, I think, that we follow up and look at it. I do think that if we take no action on it, the council will be more sympathetic.
To what?
To allowing it, because if I'm correct on the point of sale issue, it would mean more tax, more sales tax revenue.
I think the environmental community would think that's not the right trade off. But I guess we could, you know, they can activate.
All I'm saying is I just think that sometimes it's better if we take something up and really work it because council doesn't have the time to work this kind of thing and look at it in his hard, you know.
Right, I agree with your point. Your point makes sense, except that I don't think we should do anything to encourage this sort of development. And that would be the message we send to the council, that we just don't encourage this sort of development. And then if they say, well, you know, you're not looking at the big picture and, you know, we need these jobs and we need this and that. Okay, well, that's their decision. But I don't think we as a commission should, under any circumstances, encourage this sort of development.
Well, the reason I would like this to come back just because I don't agree with no, never, ever on, well, certainly on something like this. I think it's something that should be examined fully. I think we should see what the financial implications are for our city. I don't agree that creating, you know, I guess we can call them low paying jobs is a sin. It's a terrible thing. I think creating jobs at any level is a good thing. Of course, we want jobs that pay more. But I think job creation in itself is not a bad thing. And I think we do owe it to our city to look at the finances of these things. So I'd like to see it come back to us sooner than later if that's what the city's looking for and for us to look at all sides of it rather than just height.
That's a motion. Is there a second to your motion? I'll second it if no one else does. Can you call the roll?
Base Chair Roberts? Chair Womack? Commissioner Lamb? Commissioner Irvin? Commissioner Hirschbein? Commissioner Maruzi? And Commissioner Song? Question to continue, there's a group of three.
Do a date uncertain, Flynn.
Date uncertain.
Correct.
May I make a comment real quick? Just to visualize what 1 over 1,800 square foot parking requirement is like is you can go by FedEx and you can see that not even 50% of the parking spaces is occupied with cars. So it's just to give you a perspective of a ratio of 1 over 800 square foot space looks like in a parking lot.
Thank you. I do think we need to look at this issue a little bit more. Okay, new business. We have, we have no new business. We have a discussion item, discussion of a zoning ordinance amendments to allow limited kenneling functions in the CBD district. Flynn, can I have a staff report on that?
Certainly. Moving on to a completely different topic, we're now going to talk about a cat cafe. As you will recall, from a previous planning commission meeting, we had public comment where an individual requested that the planning commission consider the allowance of a cat cafe in the central business district. In terms of the city's zoning regulations, cat cafe would require that they have kennels on site and kenneling is not permitted in the central business district zone. So there's really two options to allow this. Number one is to do a zone text amendment to allow kennels. Or the second option that we have is for the planning commission to make a determination that a cat cafe is similar to other uses that are permitted in the central business district. Let me just go through those two options briefly. In terms of the zone text amendment, you as the planning commission did consider the ability to have kenneling in the downtown area in 2015 and then in 2018. In those discussions, and this was primarily related to having some type of animal daycare facilities in the central business district zone, there were a couple of concerns that were raised. Number one, having adequate exercise area or outdoor space for the animals. Number two was concerns about waste from the kennels. And then number three, there was a concern about noise. In terms of moving forward with a zone text amendment, if that's the direction that you'd like to go, what we would need to do is to amend Chapter 92 of the zoning code to allow the kennel use. You could restrict that to just cat cafes, but you would need to allow the kennel use somehow. And then secondly, based on your previous conversations, we would also want to amend the Palm Springs municipal code to establish standards for kennels in terms of minimum areas of kennel sizes, minimum exercise areas, et cetera. The timeframe to do a zone text amendment would typically take about three to four months by the time it went through the planning commission and up to the city council. In terms of the cost, there would be no cost to an applicant if this was initiated by the planning commission, which you all as the planning commission have the authority to do. Looking at the other option, there is a method by which an applicant can request a determination from the planning commission relative to a use that's not specifically listed in the zoning code. And cat cafe is certainly a use that isn't listed in our zoning code. You've done this before, most recently with the pinball museum. There was a request for a determination from the planning commission to allow the pinball museum in the M1P zone. And so there is a vehicle by which you can do this and it's something that we've done in the past. In terms of the findings that the planning commission would need to make relative to the cat cafe use, you'd have to make a finding that it is similar to other uses that are permitted in the zone and that the impacts from that use are no more than any other use that's permitted in the zone. In terms of a cat cafe, the argument that we as staff could make to you is that we do allow pet stores in the central business district zone. And the pet store use and the cat cafe are somewhat similar in that the cat cafe, as it's being proposed, is basically trying to find homes for cats from a shelter facility. And so it's not dissimilar to a pet store use. And so if you were to have a determination come before you, I think there's a good argument that could be made that it is similar to another use that's permitted in the central business district zone. In terms of the timeframe for the determination from the planning commission, it's much less than going through a zoning code amendment. The timeframe would be about 30 days, depending on when the applicant files the application. The cost is about $1,500 or $1,600 for the applicant. And then a land use permit would also be required on top of that for the cat cafe because the restaurant use or the cafe use does require a land use permit in the central business district zone. So those are the two options that I'd be looking for direction from the planning commission in terms of how you would want to proceed with this cat cafe use. One of the other things that I just want to point out relative to a cat cafe is that this use needs to be also approved by the health district. There are specific standards that they would impose upon this relative to separation of food service areas from the actual area where customers or potential customers would interact with the cats. And so the applicant would need to be aware of that. And then relative to the land use permit, there are specific conditions that we as staff would impose upon this use in terms of the ultimate number of cats that they would be able to kennel on site at any one time. Also, we would want to require that they have an agreement with a shelter as opposed to a breeder. And we would want some type of monitoring by the shelter itself in addition to a number of other conditions that we would impose. So I just want to make it clear to you, if we go the determination route, there would still be restrictions that we would impose through a conditional use permit. And so basically what I am looking for from the planning commission is direction relative to these two approaches to dealing with a cat cafe. We could either go the zone text amendment route, which would be about three to four months, or we could do the planning commission determination, which potentially is something that we could have before you at the December 8th planning commission meeting. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you for questions and discussions in terms of how you would like to approach this.
I would just like people to respond to which route they might like to go with this.
I'm struggling with the name cat cafe.
What is it a cafe? What does this mean a cafe?
They serve cats.
I just got a tender person who's taking care of my dog and they want to know, they said my dog wanted to know if they were serving cats.
What is the cat cafe? Do you walk in there?
It's, they have one in La Jolla. They have little cats sitting by the window, sitting in little beds, looking out at people. And people make an appointment. They come in and they sit with the cats. And if the cats are very lucky, someone takes them home.
And I guess in this case, they wanted to have it be a coffee house and cat adoption area, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
They actually prepared some materials which we had sent out to you about a month and a half ago. And if you'd like, I could resend that to you if you want more information in terms of what they're doing.
Don't we have the doggy cafe where you go in and you take your dog with you and?
Yeah, it's called Four Paw. And Four Paw encourages people to bring their canines in with them and have coffee.
And it's a logic.
It's a coffee house that I like. There aren't many dogs there, funny enough, but the entire thing is themed around dogs and they encourage it. I'm just going to say I like the idea of this, the idea of adopting out cats. I think it could be a really charming use, something very unusual, something very Palm Springs. And if we can find a way to do something like this, I'm very open to it.
I'm open also, and I like the second means of getting there.
I'm seeing, can I just see thumbs up for second means?
I just have a question, one other question, please.
I'm seeing every thumb, but two.
All right, well, my thumb is ready to move somewhere. I just have a question. When we discussed the issue of a kennel, which is overnight housing, correct? This is what we're talking about. It's not just a kennel. It's your house. We did, there was a central business district request, project that we turned down because they didn't have any outdoor area for the animals. Do you remember this? It's maybe about a year or two ago. So how would that differ from what we're talking about here?
You don't have an outdoor area usually for cats.
What?
So think of the shelter gang. The shelter does not have an outdoor area for cats that I know of. They have a cat room and the cats are free to run around in the room. And they have all the, as the chair was pointing out, you know, they have all sorts of beds and boxes and things that they hang out in. But again, like the shelter, their goal isn't to house them. It's to turn them over. It's to find homes for them. And so I don't, I think the idea is that the cats, we're not really kenneling, we're, they're moving them out.
Well, they're spending the night, yeah?
They're spending at least a night and maybe multiple nights, but they're not living there. Hopefully, they're there temporarily.
Director Fag, what was the process that was used for that particular project that came forward that we turned down? What process?
We were actually looking at a zone text amendment at that time for that specific use. And the ultimate direction of the planning commission was not to move forward with it because of the concerns about that. This is a little bit different in that the cat cafe, number one, would be limited to cats and it's already been pointed out. They don't need, they don't have the same demands that dogs do. And then secondly, the other proposal was for a daycare facility, which would allow overnight kenneling for an extended period of time. Concerns of the planning commission, as I had already pointed out, were the fact that dogs need exercise space and this didn't really have it, also concerns about waste and noise.
So was it zone text amendment option one or two?
That was option number one.
Okay, and we're opting, most of us seem to want, I'm fine with two. I understand the difference between the dogs and the cats here.
And I guess the one question is, is there any way that people can take a cat into the cafe? Fortunately, can you drink a cup of coffee and hold a kitty?
I don't know that you can. The health district is the one that specifically requires the standards relative to food service be upheld. From what I've read and what I've seen, I don't think you can take food products in with the cats.
You can do it with dogs outside.
Slightly different situation.
So wait a minute. Flynn, how does it work with Four Paw? Where people are allowed to bring their dogs and go right up to the food counter? People order food and drink and sit down at tables and sofas?
I can't speak to what the health district is doing there and whether they know about that.
Oh, okay.
And then secondly, they don't have kenneling. Yeah, they don't have kenneling there, so it's not the same issue for us in terms of zoning regulations.
Well, I mean, if they can figure out a way to separate the, I mean, it sounds like we're not really clear on the required separation between cats and coffee. Can we leave that to the applicant to research? But help the applicant, if the applicant can find a way to do that successfully in their business plan, how can we help them?
Yeah. What I'd recommend is that we leave that to the health district to determine whatever separation may be necessary and that we as the city don't need to get into that matter. I just wanted to note that, in case the applicant is watching, that they will need to communicate with the health district and resolve any issues the health district may have.
I do think it's really important that they're clear about their hours because the only bad thing about the place in La Jolla is their hours where you don't see a kitten and you don't see anyone in there. So it's just, it would be nice. I mean, it's, it has a real draw to the public if it works and they actually have it populated with kitties. What a nice thing to end this on. Do you need any other suggestions on this?
No, I'm good. I'll go ahead and work directly with the applicant and we will have them come forward with a determination application.
Any wage or fees a fee for her?
Unfortunately not. We don't have that ability as staff unless city council specifically waives. We don't have that ability as staff unless city council specifically waives a fee.
The next item, we have a couple of things for the commission. One is, I think we have a request to have a study session on the new state laws. And they'd originally been talked about the, I think the third week, but the, the request was to have it the first week, I think on the first of December.
Madam Chair, we've done some additional research into that in terms of having a study session on December the first, and it doesn't look like we'll be able to do that based on notification requirements. Just so that you're aware, we have a rather full agenda scheduled for December the 8th. And so it would be difficult to do both a study session and your regular agenda on the 8th. And so we'll need to break this up into two parts. In addition, there are likely a couple of applications that we won't get to on December the 8th that we need to take action on before the end of the year, based on the timeframe of applicants and some of the other things that we have in process. So we do need a second meeting in December. And as I had indicated, I would have liked to have gotten that out of the way on December the 1st before we get into the holiday period. But it looks like now what we will need to do is do a second meeting with a study session on December the 15th, if planning commission is available on that date. I understand that one of our commissioners may not be available, Commissioner Hirschbein. And I'm not sure if there's anything else we can do there.
So you're asking for us another meeting on the 15th?
Yeah, we are.
And there's a meeting on the first as well?
No, unfortunately, we won't meet notification deadlines, public hearing notification deadlines for the first. I was hoping that we'd be able to do that, but we just can't.
And when, how loaded, how loaded an agenda will the 15th be?
We currently have eight items on the December 8th agenda. What I'd like to do is break that into six items on December the 8th, and then a study session and two to three items on your second meeting.
Well, Merry Christmas, Flynn.
And Happy New Year.
Ken, are people available? I would say that I am.
I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm available.
I'm available.
For a short meeting.
Whoa. I'm available for both dates. I just want to know, the study session could go long. How, how much time did you want to set aside for that? It's an extremely complicated issue.
It, it is an extremely complicated issue. What I'd like to do is set aside two hours for that. If we could, we may want to start the meeting with the study session a little bit earlier than our normal 5:30 start time.
The memo that you sent from the city attorney was so complicated and confusing, I couldn't understand what the whole point of it was, since it's a law that the state has passed and it was going to be implemented, so confused there.
Oh, it's happened.
Yeah, so I don't understand what's the discussion point, since it's going to go into effect in January 1st. But anyway, that was what we were supposed to discuss, I suppose.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, even though I may not be there, I did request, before I didn't know I was going to be there, that the study session be accompanied by some diagrams that lay out these, these different scenarios. And that might help you understand what the issues are.
Yeah, I don't know that we as staff will be able to do that just based on time constraints. However, our consultant for our general plan update has provided David and I with some visual tools that may be helpful for you. So what we will do is forward those on to you as the planning commission.
Which date is the second meeting, Flynn?
We're looking at December the 15th.
A Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah.
Can I respond to you back in the email?
Yes, that would be more than appropriate.
Are we saying that we're going to start at five?
We could start at five or 4:30. It depends on you as the commissioners, if you have constraints that wouldn't allow us to do that.
I'd rather start at 4:30 and do the study session first, so we have time to discuss the issue.
And you will finish earlier.
Sorry, but which date, the study session would be at what time on the, on the 8th?
We would, let's see, we would actually do a regular meeting at 5:30 on December the 8th, and then the earlier start time would be on December the 15th, if that is agreeable for our planning commission members.
And the study session would be on which date?
December the 15th.
Oh, the 15th, okay. So like 3:00 PM on the 15th, you're saying?
Yeah.
I, I'm going to vote yes for that. I can do that, 4:30 on the 15th.
I think it's at 3:00 PM, but.
Okay.
If people would do thumbs up if you know you can do it.
And then Commissioner Irvin, I'll touch base with you either tomorrow or early next week on your availability as well.
So we only, I've only seen three people say they knew they could do it.
I, I can't confirm at this point.
So I'll follow up with Commissioner Layton as well.
Study session at three or four?
Four or 4:30 is what I've heard from the commissioners.
I'd say 4:00 PM. I can do it, 4:00 PM.
I'm, I'm going to throw something out quickly and maybe we can discuss it next time. I would like to see us possibly work on a urban tree ordinance. We don't have any ordinance. They're, they're doing something in terms of climate change, but what's going through city council has nothing to do with cooling our environment. And I think if the planning commission could work on an ordinance regarding trees at a minimum, preserving trees and requiring permits to take trees of a certain age down, but also beginning to envision a urban forest in our city as opposed to an occasional tree here or there that gets chopped down every once in a while. It's something I would like us to do. There are at least eight very progressive cities that have great urban tree ordinances and their models that we can work with. And Flynn said we might have time beginning next year to do that.
Madam Chair, could that be a joint effort with AAC landscape architect members?
I think it would be great to do it as joint with them. Sustainability had in their recommendations, and they, they suggested working with us, but they referred to trees as needing too much water and therefore shade structures would be preferable to trees. And I don't think that's the route our city should take.
So I'd like to suggest that we start with sustainability in AAC. It seems more in their wheelhouse. And then have them come up with a plan and have us take a look at it after. Flynn, what would you prefer in this?
I could see it going either way. One of the things I might suggest is maybe we have a subcommittee that includes a representative of sustainability commission, a member of ARC and a member of planning commission, do some initial work on this together. So that way we can bring in both groups as we look at moving forward with this type of effort.
That sounds like a great idea, and I nominate Chairwoman Wermek as our representative from the planning commission.
I've already been pulling materials together, but I also think Commissioner Song has had a great deal of interest. I know trees were your second priority when we had to set priorities. So maybe we could bring her in too.
Run, Maria, run.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was asking Director if we can, on that, on any industrial projects, if we can have a tree for every 20 linear feet of building facade. So I'm with you.
The only other issue is, this is an unfortunate Christmas. We usually, we used to have wonderful Christmas parties for staff. I don't think we're going to be able to find, we might find a venue to do it this year. But I will probably give each of you a call to think about what we do for staff since we can't throw a party for them.
We cannot throw a party?
I don't, do you think we can, Flynn?
We could do a party if we could do it outdoors, just being very cautious on the part of the example that the city sets. If we could find a venue that was outdoors and safe from the elements, because we have no idea what the weather is going to be like in December. It could be 90, it could be 50 degrees, we don't know. But if we could find a location outdoors, that would work. But it's been difficult in us trying to obtain something like that.
How about north of the 10 somewhere?
There's, there are a couple of fields with windmills.
I mean, it seems like there's, if we, if we all put our heads together, there's probably an outdoor area of a restaurant or a hotel that has heaters in case it's cold that we can borrow for an evening event? Or something that's primarily a daytime use that we use in the evening or something?
If you have any ideas, please forward those on to either the Chair or myself.
Well, Flynn and I will be thinking about it. Your ideas would help. If any of you have an HOA with a wonderful clubhouse, that could help too.
Basically, we just need a big backyard that has the potential for eating, right?
Yep.
How about Ascena?
Well, Ascena charges too much for events if they would let people in. I mean, I could ask them on a night that they're closed if we could use, but it, I'm sure we could go there and order food, but it wouldn't be, you know, it would be just going there and using it and making reservations.
That sounds dreary.
And unfortunately, you know, places like my house isn't large enough anymore. And my backyard's got too many pools in it. So anyway, if anybody has thoughts on that?
Why don't we email them to you?
Okay. And I think with that, do you have any other, do you have any reports?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to report on an item that was appealed to the city council. As you recall, you all considered the green savants application for a cannabis facility on Research Drive, which ultimately you denied based upon a finding that the adjacent dance studio was a youth center. The item was appealed to the city council at the city council meeting. Unfortunately, they overturned your decision, but they did agree with you that the dance studio is a youth center. What they are having the applicant do is file a waiver application that will be required to come back before the city council to waive the distance between the facility and the youth center. So again, they did find that the facility was a youth center, they agreed with the planning commission on that point. One of the things that we'll be looking at doing based on your decision and support from the city council is as we get into the annual update of the zoning code, we will clearly define that a youth center includes both public and private facilities. So it's clear for applicants in the future moving forward, how we define youth centers. So with that, we do appreciate the work that the planning commission did on that item. And ultimately, what you have done is provided clarification on that issue. Madam Chair, that's the only report I have. Mr. Newell, do you have any other items for the planning commission?
Just the only other thing that I would add is that the city submitted its response to HCD for the housing element comments that we received. So we did that on November 2nd. So they'll have 60 days from that date to respond and let us know that everything looks good, or they may give us more comments. Hopefully that's not the case, but in anticipation of them concluding their review within the 60 day period and saying that our housing element is in compliance with state law, we would schedule the adoption of the housing element for January so that we can meet the statutory deadlines in February for both planning commission review and city council review at a public hearing.
What kind of comments did they give you? Or can you send those out to us so we don't have to make you recite them now at this late hour?
Well, it's eight pages of comments, so I hope you.
I would save that.
If you'd send them to us, that would be great.
Yes. And that's it.
Okay. And with that, we will adjourn the planning commission until 5:30 on Wednesday, December 8th, 2021. Good night all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night.
Thank you.